Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavill. Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan. Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next recommended action is to go into closed session and the board of recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, matter pertaining to an individual student, and collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Row call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Is that the Board of Education return to open session? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Row call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome this evening. Before we begin our recognitions, I'd like to read our mission statement, which reads, Township High School District 211 serves the needs of our diverse community by providing relevant and rigorous learning experiences, opportunities for involvement, and strong support systems that empower all students to reach their full potential. Thank you. And recognitions, Dr. Small.
Will Assistant Superintendent Josh Schumacher please come to the podium and introduce to us some of our directors that are here tonight and our talented students?
Board of Education and Dr. Small, thank you for taking the time tonight to honor our All-State Honors musicians from the ILMEA this year. Tonight, we will be honoring students from four of our schools' music departments. Also here tonight to support and honor their students are Fremd Principal Mark Langer, Conant Principal Julie Novak, Schaumburg Principal Brian Harland, and Assistant Principal Rusty Cummings, Hoffman Estates Principal Mike Arthur, and Assistant Principal Tom Mokon. Students, as your director introduces you, please walk forward, receive your award, and stand next to the podium. Additionally, I'm going to ask the family members of the students that are present tonight to please stand and be recognized as your student is initially introduced by their director. Starting us off tonight is Matt Moore from BAND. Matthew Moore is in his 23rd year as the Director of Bands at Fremd High School. Matt has earned three music degrees from Northern Illinois University. Mr. Moore's bands have won numerous state honors, but what Mr. Moore is very proud of are the large numbers of Fremd Band alumni who have become strong arts advocates and supporters of music programs in their communities. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. Good evening, Dr. Small and Board of Education members. On behalf of my music colleagues from all five high schools, we appreciate and support the opportunity to acknowledge our All-State musicians. Our music departments belong to the Illinois Music Education Association, which encompasses nine districts throughout the state. We are part of District 7, which consists of about 50 high schools and consider perhaps one of the most competitive ILMEA districts in the state. Being selected for All-State is the highest honor for a high school musician. I'm thrilled to be able to recognize and congratulate five outstanding student musicians from the Fremd Band Program who all recently performed at the Illinois Music Education Conference, also known as the All-State Conference. All of the students are exemplary members of the Fremd Wind Symphony and leaders in their sections. I first like to recognize Senior Mark Ariano, who is joined tonight by his parents Erica and Scott Ariano. Mark is our top trumpet player in the Fremd Band Program and was selected to perform in the IMEC Honors Jazz Ensemble. Last year, he was selected for the All-State Honors Band, so it's an incredible accomplishment to be selected both as a classical and jazz All-State musician two years back-to-back. Outside of the music department, Mark is a member of the varsity soccer team, and next year, he plans to attend Purdue University and major in computer science. Congratulations, Mark, on this well-deserved All-State Jazz Honor. I would like to next recognize Senior Aman Khan, who is joined tonight by his mother, Asia Ali. Aman is our top bassoonist, who was selected to perform in the IMEC Honors Band. Outside of the music department, he's also a member of the indoor color guard team. Next year, Aman plans to attend the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign and major in accounting. Congratulations, Aman, on your All-State musical achievement. Next is Senior Thomas Lu, who is joined tonight by his father, Tim Lu. Tom is our top tenor saxophonist and was selected to perform in the IMEC Honors Band. Thomas is also very involved in the Fremd Scholastic Bowl and math team. Next year, he plans to attend the University of California Berkeley or the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, where he will major in computer science or math. Congratulations to Thomas on your IMEC All-State Honor. Next, I would like to recognize Senior Hannah Oyasu, who is joined by her parents Machio and Seje Ayasu. Hannah is our principal flute in the band program and was selected to perform this year in the IMEC Honors Orchestra. She was also selected as an All-State musician last year, playing in the Honors Band. It's important to note that Hannah was selected as principal or first chair in this year's Honors Orchestra, which qualifies her as the top flute player for the entire state of Illinois. She's also involved with the Viking Log Newspaper and finds time in her busy schedule to perform in the Chicago Youth Symphony Orchestra on the weekend. Hannah is waiting to hear from a few schools regarding her final college choice, but plans to major in neuroscience and/or flute performance next year. Congratulations, Hannah, and thank you for all that you've done for the Fremd Band. Our final student to be recognized tonight is sophomore Elise Schlesinger, who is joined tonight by her parents Melissa and Matthew Schlesinger. Her father, Matt, is also choir director at Hoffman Estates High School. Elise is the principal French horn player in the band program and was selected to perform in the IMEC Honors Band. This is a very significant accomplishment for a sophomore musician and testament to Elise's hard work and dedication to her instrument. She's also part of the indoor color guard team and also performs in the Chicago Youth Symphony Orchestra. Congratulations, Elise, on your All-State musical achievement, and we hope to see you back here next year.
Christina Collins started teaching at William-Fremd High School in 2014. She attended the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign and graduated with a bachelor's degree in music education and has a master's degree from DePaul. While at Illinois, she performed in various vocal groups, including the Rip Chords, a female a cappella group. Christina Collins, Fremd Choir.
Thank you, Dr. Small and school board members, for the opportunity to present tonight. I am very pleased to present four Fremd Choir students for their participation in the Illinois All-State Honors Choir. This places them in the top four of their voice parts for our region of the north and northwest suburbs. It is an honor to be their teacher because all of them are wonderful musicians and people. I am so happy that they have been able to continue in Fremd Choir along with their very busy academic and extracurricular schedules. First, I would like to introduce Senior Grace Herbst, here with her parents Sue and Steve. Grace performed as an alto I in the All-State Honor Choir. Grace is an outstanding spirit leader in chamber singers and has been a member of the choir program for all four years. Grace is planning to major in theater in college and is currently one of the lead characters in our upcoming musical Footloose. Please help me in congratulating Grace Herbst. I'm delighted to recognize Anish Mukherjee, here with his mom, Aditi. Anish is a bass I and has been in choir for the past four years as well. He is also competing at the State Speech Tournament this weekend, leaving tomorrow. He is currently a section leader in chamber singers and has been selected for the Illinois All-State Choirs for the past three years, as well as the National Honor Choir for the past two years, which is very impressive. He is planning to major in computer science and continue studying music in college. Please help me in congratulating Anish. Next, I'm happy to recognize Sophia Zortzis, along with her parents Tracy and Alex. Sophia sings soprano I and is also very involved in choir, speech, and theater. I look forward to working with her for one more year in high school next year. She continues to maintain a rigorous course schedule, and I hope that she will continue making music after graduation. Please help me in congratulating Sophia. Finally, Mia Ruffel was not able to join us tonight, but she was honored to sing alto II. She is also a form-year member of the Fremd Choir Program and sings with Palatine Children's Chorus, and will perform a solo with the Jazz Bands next week at their Jazz and Java performance. So congratulations to everyone, and thank you again.
Marla Caballero is in her 30th year of teaching music and the orchestra director at Fremd High School. She earned her bachelor's degree in music education from Illinois Wesleyan University and a master's degree in music education from Vandercook College of Music. Mrs. Caballero is also a proud District 211 graduate.
Thank you all very much for this opportunity to recognize our students. All three of the Fremd Orchestra students that I would like to recognize tonight are incredible musicians and leaders in the Fremd Orchestras. They all serve as section leaders and wear many hats in that orchestra. I'm very proud of them for all they've accomplished, but more importantly, who they are and how they represent themselves, their families, and Fremd Orchestras. The first student I would like to recognize tonight is junior violinist Alex Kim, and he is here with his dad, Kwang Suk Kim. This is Alex's second year in the All-State Honors Orchestra, first violin section. Alex is a two-year member of Fremd Symphony Orchestra and is also a member of the Chicago Symphony, Youth Symphony Orchestra and corps, which is the Classical Orchestra Repertoire Ensemble, the Fremd Science Bowl, Fremd Math Team, Varsity Tennis Team. So he is busy, but loves playing his violin and finds much solace and stress relief playing it. Congratulations, Alex. Next is junior violinist Kayleen Liao. She is here with her parents Kai Liao and Karen Chang. She is a member of the All-State Honors Orchestra, first violin section this year. This was her first All-State experience. Kayleen is a three-year member of Fremd Symphony Orchestra, playing both violin and viola. This year, viola full-time at Fremd, but playing violin every opportunity that she gets. She is also a member of Fremd Robotics and the Schaumburg Youth Symphony Orchestra and Schaumburg Youth Orchestra Chamber Program. Congratulations, Kayleen. And lastly, senior violinist, who could not be here tonight, Lisa Kazami. She is auditioning at the Eastman School of Music in New York tomorrow, so she flew out of town this evening, but she is being recognized tonight and is a third-time member of the All-State Honors Orchestra, first violin section, this year as concert master, receiving a number-one ranking in the state. She's a three-year member of Fremd Symphony Orchestra and the Chicago Youth Symphony Orchestra. Lisa is planning to major in violin performance and is auditioning for a variety of universities and conservatories. Congratulations to Lisa.
Mr. Tim Cole is in his 14th year teaching choir at Conant High School, where he also serves as the Department Chair of Music. Tim is the director of the variety show, the vocal director of the musical, and the sponsor of the School of Rock Club. Mr. Tim Cole.
Good evening, and thank you. It is my honor to be here tonight and recognize Emma Shuth, who is joined by her mother, Jody. Emma is the type of performer, student, and person who achieves extreme levels of success in her singing and performing career. Not only did she earn the opportunity of participating in the Honors All-State Choir, which brings her here tonight, but has also been recognized for her dedication and excellence to her performance in the context of musical theater. Last year, Emma was recognized as one of the top 12 female performers by the Broadway and Chicago Illinois High School Musical Theater Awards. Beyond that, she has performed several leading roles in theatrical productions, not only at Conant High School, but within theater companies in the surrounding suburbs as well. Thank you, Emma, for setting an example for those around you and raising the bar at Conant High School.
Devin Godzicki is in her 11th year teaching and sixth year at Conant High School. She attended the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign as an undergrad in music education and earned her master's in music education from Illinois State University. From the Conant Orchestra, Devin Godzicki.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I am going to introduce Kat Rumel first. She is not here with us, but she is a senior at Conant High School and plays the bass. She is involved in the Symphony Orchestra and plays in the Schaumburg Youth Orchestra. She made District 7 this year and went to her first Honors All-State experience. On top of her musical skills, she is kind, hardworking, and altruistic, and participates in the speech team. Congratulations, Kat. Next, we have Yuki Sato, who is accompanied by Miki Sato. Yuki is a senior at Conant and plays the violin. He has been in the Symphony Orchestra all four years. He is, as a sophomore, he made District 7 IMEA, and now as a senior, made the Honors All-State Orchestra in the second violin section. On top of music, he's very involved in music and swimming, and works at a ramen house in the community. Congratulations, Yuki. Next, we have Lily Yoshihara, and she is accompanied by her father, Peter Yoshihara. Lily is a sophomore at Conant High School and plays the violin. Lily has made the District 7 IMEA each year in high school and participates in musical competitions regularly, earning great recognitions. Lily is also a member of the Midwest Philharmonic Orchestra. This year at All-State, her first year at All-State, Lily earned fourth chair in the first violin section in the Honors Orchestra, a well-deserved accomplishment. Congratulations, Lily. And finally, we have Iri Ito, who is accompanied by her mom, Harumi Ito. Iri is a junior and is a courageous leader. She is not, this is not the first time that Iri has accomplished high musical recognition. She has been involved in IMEA since her freshman year, gaining multiple accomplishments. Iri has performed at Carnegie Hall with judges' distinction for American protege, attended HIFIT's PEG and NYO2 last year, and was the winner of the Midwest Competition and performed in 2017-19 in this coming weekend. At All-State, Iri was second chair alongside of our Fremd colleague in the first violin section in the Honors Orchestra, yet another accomplishment she has added to her list. Congratulations, Iri.
Susan Carlson has been teaching orchestra in District 211 for 18 years. Prior to teaching in District 211, she freelanced as a violinist in the Chicagoland area and taught both private and group classes. Along with directing Schaumburg's orchestra, Susan is currently an active member of the Elgin Symphony Orchestra and maintains her own violin studio. From the Schaumburg High School Orchestra, Susan Carlson.
Good evening, and thank you. I would like to congratulate junior Mia Hardison, who is joined by her mother, Ryoko Hardison. Junior Mia Hardison is very involved at SHS, taking part in many clubs such as NHS, HOSA, Student Council, and Yearbook. Aside from her academic studies, she spends a lot of time making music. She is a violinist and a violist, and has been playing since kindergarten and violist since sixth grade. She's also a member of the Schaumburg Youth Orchestra Program, playing both orchestral and chamber music. And Mia is just an outstanding, excellent role model for her peers at Schaumburg, and it's been delightful to see her growth this year in particulars. Congratulations, Mia.
Mr. Anthony Graffio has been a band director at Schaumburg High School since 2014. At Schaumburg, he co-teaches each of the curricular concert bands and is an assistant director for the variety show. He holds degrees in music education from Eastern Illinois University and the University of Illinois. Schaumburg High School Band, Mr. Graffio.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to honor our Honors Band students. First, we have, along with her parents, Rima and Leo, Josephine Mascherinas. Josephine is a devoted and expressive musician and leader at the Schaumburg Band Program. As a senior, Josephine serves as drum major for the Sax and Marching Band and is also the band board president. She plays soprano and alto saxophone in the Wind Symphony, and has also played both tenor and baritone sax in the Jazz Ensemble. While she primarily plays alto at last month's All-State Conference, Josephine was selected as a baritone saxophonist for the Honors Band, recognizing Josephine as one of the top classical sax, baritone saxophonists in the state of Illinois. Outside of music, Josephine is involved as a well-rounded student, enrolled in multiple AP classes, National Honor Society, and is a part of the bandment team. Josephine brings a positive and thoughtful attitude to her leadership roles, which is noticed throughout the school. She plans to study music education in college and currently serves as an intern in the elementary classroom in our own high school band. Congratulations to Josephine Mascherinas on your recognition in the ILMY. Accompanied by her parents, or by her mom, Tina, it is my pleasure to introduce you to Jenna Valoria. Jenna is a dedicated and energetic musician and leader in the Schaumburg Band Program. In her senior year, Jenna served as one of the clarinet section leaders in the marching band and plays bass clarinet with the Wind Symphony. At last month's All-State Conference, Jenna was selected as one of the bass clarinetists for the Honors Band, recognizing her as one of the top bass clarinetists in the state of Illinois. A diligent and well-rounded student, Jenna is also involved in multiple AP courses, the National Honor Society, and is a very strong leader in our Theater Tech Program. She's a positive and innovative, kind role model for students throughout our school and serves as a mentor for many of the Theater Tech students. Congratulations, Jenna, on your recognition for the ILMIA Honors Band.
Mr. Matt Schlesinger is the choral director at Hoffman Estates High School. In addition, he directs a vocal jazz program, The Madrigal Singers, a cappella groups, along with being the vocal director of the Hoffman Estates High School Musical, and I believe the only director who's also a parent here tonight, being recognized. So congratulations, Matt Schlesinger, Hoffman Estates Chorus.
I am proud to introduce Jude Meyer, along with his parents, Scott and Laura. Jude is a senior at Hoffman, has been in choir all four years, and has always served as a vocal model for others around him. This is also his second year at the ILMIA Honors Chorus. Jude's commitment to excellence shows in every ensemble he performs with, whether it's supporting the bass and madrigals or carrying his own scene in Les Mis. I'm especially proud of his growth this past year as a silent leader. Whether he wants to admit it or not, Jude is consistently a positive influence on everyone around him, actively working behind the scenes to promote and demonstrate excellence without looking for any personal recognition. He is truly an outstanding musician, a wonderful human being, and he serves as an excellent representative of this district. Congratulations, Jude. And finally, it's my pleasure to introduce Kyla Peiser and her parents, Michael and Christina. Kyla, who is a senior at Hoffman, is an incredibly inquisitive musician, always seeking to improve by asking thought-provoking questions that would be appropriate in any college theory class. Also in her second year in the Honors Chorus, four years in choir, madrigals, and musical, along with her experience in TRIAM and as a flute player in band, these have all shaped her into not only an incredible singer, but a strong, all-around musician. I am especially impressed with Kyla's introspectiveness, constantly reflecting on every experience and seeking to improve at every moment. This self-awareness and drive towards excellence is a rare combination, and one that will serve her in all of her future endeavors. Kyla brings this drive to every group she sings with, and she is truly a joy to work with each and every day. Congratulations, Kyla.
Will Mr. Richard Cortez please come forward with your student? Mr. Cortez is a member of our Conant Mathematics Department and has taught computer science for nearly three decades. He sponsors Conant's math team, tirelessly promotes his students and their work in coding, and has mentored multiple students to this top award of the Congressional App Challenge. Once again, we have another Conant winner for this challenge, and I am pleased to welcome Mr. Cortez as he introduces us to him.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the board, and especially thank you to Superintendent Dr. Small for being great supporters of computer science education. I'm a little biased, but I believe we have the best computer science program in the entire state of Illinois, and I've visited many of them. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the investment you've put into it, and this is the kind of student we get because of it. The Congressional App Challenge has been around since 2016, and I'm very proud that Anmei is continuing the tradition of Conant graduates that are placing in the top three. We've, Conant's won it multiple times, and I'm glad to say that he also is a winner this year. So here's what I'd like you to picture. When you think of technology, you think of all the best people in technology. The goal of technology these people usually have is to solve a problem. So they think of a problem in society, they think of something that's lacking, they think of something that we're not doing in society that we need. And then they go out and they do it, and they end up making a lot of money doing it, but they also help the world. So Anmei decided to solve a problem. So imagine you're in sixth grade, and imagine that you're doing robotics. And I don't know if any of you have ever done robotics before, but when you're doing robotics with Lego robotics, it is the most frustrating thing you could ever do. The robots don't work, they don't program very easily, they don't go in a straight line, they just don't work very well. And he was aware of that. So what did he decide to do? He wanted to solve a problem. So he decides to build his own robot from scratch, and not only build his own robot, he built it in a way that has very, very few chips, that might not mean too much to you, but it really does mean something, and the microprocessor is very, very, very small, which means it's very light, very maneuverable. And he went way beyond building a robot, though. He decided to build his entire robot interface for programming. So he built the process, the language, that you can program the robot with from scratch. And this is an amazing feat for a high school student to do. So he's well-deserving of this win. And you might say, well, it's just a hobby, right? And he also, by the way, 3D-printed the entire robot. So, and that's just on the side, that's a hobby of his. So it's not just a hobby. He's taken this into the grade schools, he's taught this robotics platform to some of the grade schools, he's taught almost 100 different kids the robotics, he teaches at the Schaumburg Library. He also has, it's called Sky Robotics, by the way, and I would bet you'll be hearing more about that. And his plans in the future are to continue this and actually develop these robots to be able to use specifically for teaching, for teaching our young people and getting them involved in robotics, which is an up-and-coming field, and it's going to grow and grow and grow and grow. So Anmei is extremely deserving, and I'm very proud to be his teacher. Congratulations.
Anmei, if you will come up. Anmei, if you will come up.
Wow. I don't know what to say after that, but I would like to, to thank all of our students for all the, the time and energy that you put into your performances, your schooling, and thank you for sharing your talents. You have absolutely no idea how much it means to the audience when they sit out there and hear the singing, hear the music, watch your performances. Thank you. You bring so much joy to, to the world, to this community, and thank you for, for doing that. Thank you to the parents for all you do to support the activities at the school, and the trips back and forth to the school for the, the different performances and so on. So thank you for all that you do, and thank you to, to the teachers. There's a lot of time and energy that needs to be put in to nurture all of these amazing young people. So I thank you very, very much. We will take a short break, we're going to take pictures of our students, um, and then we will reconvene probably within about, you know, five, six minutes or so. So let's have our students come on up, and we'll pause for a few minutes. At this time, um, is our public comments, and the Board is receptive to listening to your comments, however, it is important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the Board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. I'd like to remind everyone that aggressive, overly assertive, and disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. This includes foul language, name-calling, total disrespect towards other individuals, jeering, booing, or applauding while someone is speaking. Also, we ask that you please do not interrupt the speakers, whether they're community members, board members, or administrators. We ask that you refrain from verbal assaults or slurs, whether personal or general, and we ask that you conduct yourselves accordingly in this public forum. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the Superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper at the end of the podium here. Again, I ask that everyone please be respectful of one another and respectful to the members of the Board of Education and all the administration here. If it does get out of hand, I will ask that the person be removed. So, we have, I've got nine speakers. The first is Karen Wagner, followed by Ben Chow.
I'm Karen Wagner, a 42-year resident of High School District 211. My two daughters graduated from Friend High School. I know your responsibilities as High School District 211 Board Members are very difficult. I admire you for your service. Thank you for standing firm and putting students first in light of outside pressures. The Board approved the National Sex Education Standards Act. I praise the members for voting for that important agenda. Thank you for standing firm and for advocating for students in the light of outside pressures. Growing up in today's world is daunting. Young people find their lives bombarded with images and situations from television, the internet, movies, other media sources, and most importantly, their peers. All these sources are full of sexual content and innuendo. A young person's experience at school has references to sex and actual threats in the locker room, hallways, cafeteria, and gym. Their ability to put all into perspective is knowledge. Ignorance is dangerous. Knowledge is power. It's better to learn about sex from unemotional, agenda-free educators than peers in the locker room or in the backseat of a Mustang at 2:00 in the morning. Sex is reality. The more a young person knows, the less mysterious it is and the better it can be dealt with. A vocal minority should not be allowed to thwart this knowledge for others. The know-nothing should not prevail. Ignorance is dangerous. The lack of such education is showing a deep lack of respect for young people. Ignorance is dangerous. Knowledge gives young people the power to control their present and to plan for their future. Thank you for your sacrifice. Keep fighting for our students.
Thank you. Ben Chow, followed by Kathy Rizberg.
Good evening, my name is Benjamin Chow. I'm speaking to you today because I'm heavily concerned with what is being taught in our schools, especially in our District 211 for sex education. I'm also quite disgusted as to what I have seen and heard. Specifically, I am referring to what District 211 has adopted in the NSES. My objection to these so-called standards is why do we think it is okay to teach 5th graders on how to define transgenderism, which is found in GI5CC2? Children's brains are at an impressionable age, and to intru, introduce such a radical ideology is dangerous. Why is it dangerous, you may say? In a 2020 study titled, "Suicide Among Transgender Youth: Elucidating the Role of Interpersonal Risk Factors," the data indicates that 82% of transgender individuals have considered killing themselves and 40% have attempted suicide, with, with this suicide highest among transgender youth. To have children to start opening up Pandora's Box regarding transgenderism at such a young age is like playing with fire. Furthermore, to also teach that gender is separate from our biological sex is anti-science. How is it anti-science? Medical dictionaries do not treat gender and sex as two distinct categories, but they are synonymous. For example, the current edition of Stedman's Medical Dictionary defines gender as a category to which an individual is assigned by self or others on the basis of sex. Sex is defined as the biological character or quality that distinguishes male and female. Tabor's Cyclopedic Medical Dictionary defines gender as the sex of an individual, male or female, and sex as the characteristics that differentiate male and females in most plants and animals. Why do the writers and supporters of NSES insist that gender and six, sex are two different things? This is complete nonsense because we know that even at the molecular level, that we are either intrinsically male or female. To teach children otherwise is absolute foolishness. The curriculum should be based on actual science. I do not have time to go through each and every point in the NSES, but I believe it is quite clear that these terms like transgenderism, two-spirit, gender non-binary, and many others are inappropriate. Why are these specific terms being introduced now? These do not even exist, these terms do not even exist 20 or 30 years ago. My final point is this, if you were to take out of your pocket a US coin or dollar, you would see the term, the term "In God We Trust." This country was founded on Judeo-Christian values, and that is what made our society so sophisticated and advanced. To now deliberately accept and enforce these sex standards on the youth is making a mockery of ourselves, since we were made in God's image in God. Ask yourself this, would the previous generations that came before us in this great nation accept these standards on our children?
Thank you. Kathy Rizberg, followed by Joyce Slavik.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Rizberg, and as a District 211 taxpayer for almost 45 years, I want to express again my deep gratitude to all of you on the District 211 School Board for working with the District 211 staff to continue to strengthen the educational partnership you have with parents and students, so that all District 211 students, no matter their color of the skin, their learning profile, or gender identity, will continue to feel included and valued as respected members of what Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. described as a beloved community, a community based on truth, love, peace, justice, diversity, inclusion, equity, unity, and hope. And it is this sense of unity in our community that personally gives me much hope for our students and for our public schools, where all parents have rights, where all students have rights, and where all teachers have rights too. I am certain that most of us in our community, no matter our zip code, our age, or our faith, believe in the Constitution and the First Amendment, which guarantees the freedom of expression, and want to support our public schools as a work to create emotionally and physically safe environments where all students can experience the freedom to learn and where all teachers can experience the freedom to teach and help build a beloved community where truth, equity, inclusion, and diversity are vital part of the social fabric of both the classroom and the entire school. Yet, we also know the truth in the words expressed by Northeastern University student Pratika Katiar, who wrote, "Freedom of expression is under threat in schools across the US." Students who are already fighting for the right to express themselves freely and fairly in student publications now face an additional obstacle, a slew of new oppressive state laws aimed at controlling what students can learn and discuss in the classroom. And these laws, as so many of us have learned, have been passed by some politicians, are using the banning of books and censorship to limit and ban access to knowledge, knowledge that represents power and agency for our students and that helps them develop empathy, understanding, advocacy, and unity. So where does the financial fuel for the book banning and oppressive laws come from? It comes from dark money groups, aimed at instilling fear and division within all communities, including faith communities. These dark money groups promote disinformation and use students, parents, and community members as political pawns in an attempt to conquer and divide and to help some politicians maintain their own power and control. The good news, however, is that today, as we celebrate the 16th Day of Black History Month, we know that the majority of parents in District 211 share Martin Luther King's Jr.'s hope-filled vision and believe in the importance of supporting both a revolution of values where people come first, our students come first, and building the, and the building of a beloved community in our schools where compassion and love, not fear and censorship, lead the way, where the humanity of every person is recognized and where everyone belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce Slavik, followed by Kristin Steele.
Hi, my name is Joyce Slavik, I live in the district. On the last many months, we've been subjected to repeated vicious attacks on teachers, board members, community members, and students by right-wing extremists. The obsession, they obsess over sex and books they don't like. At a recent board meeting, a community member told of her excessive efforts searching the district website for sex ed curriculum contents. She admitted she doesn't even have kids in the district. She didn't seem to notice the many clubs or activities offered by our schools, we saw some of the great work of our kids here. Uh, she just had a weird hyper-focus about sex ed. These extremists come with folders full of information about religious and homeschooling that they hand out. They speak during public comments in large numbers with a creepy obsession over sex and the desire to ban books. One of them actually said, "We don't want to ban books," and then in the next sentence said, "Actually, we want to ban certain books." If it weren't so dangerous, it would be laughable. During the public comments, they read out-of-context passages from books they don't like, and then they leave en masse to presumably high-five each other in the parking lot. They don't stay to hear the actual business of the Board. They don't hear Ms. Cavill's articulate and thoughtful, thoughtful questions after presentations to ensure that there are equitable resources for all our students and their families across our schools. They don't hear about Mr. Room, Mr. Rosenblum's insights from his regular visits to our schools to attend all kinds of activities, or his reports from EdRed or IASB, in which we work as coalition partners with other school boards to affect policies and legislation. They don't see votes, like Mr. Dombrowski, voting against approving much-needed air-conditioning for our applied technology classrooms, despite very well-thought-out impassioned plea from the Palatine High School Applied Technology Chair. They also miss seeing Mr. Kramer avoid voting more than a dozen times in the last two years. I don't know if they aren't issues he doesn't understand, or he just doesn't have an opinion on many board issues, so he abstains or votes present. They also miss very interesting presentations on the new Academic Readiness Platform, or the presentation last month on the new communication initiative across the district that will not only make information more available to families in multiple languages and platforms, but will also provide real-life experience to our student journalists. It almost looks like the students, families, and teachers aren't that important to them. It looks like their target is really just public, uh, just public schools and our public schools in particular. We deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Steele, followed by Stacy Gale.
Good evening, I'm Kristin Steele, I live in the district, and I am a right-wing extremist. I have a sophomore in D211 and received the district communication entitled Comprehensive Sexual Health Education Notification on Monday. In this non-transparent, confusing communication, there are a few points I would like to speak on. For the students who are opted out, it is stated that they will be provided alternate assignments in a different learning environment. Upon further research, I have confirmed that the alternate assignments and different learning environment is self-guided using a software called Agenuity, which contains purchased, purchased lessons and curriculum. I had to really dig to find this information, it was not easy. I presume this is by design, though, to frustrate a parent so they do not opt out of this curriculum. I want to know when this software was prevent, presented to the Board for approval, as well as the cost it is to the district. Next, some of the opt-out topics listed in the communication email have already been covered, such as nutrition, cancer, even a few lessons on communicable and non-communicable diseases, of which, thank goodness, COVID was a part of. Is this on purpose? Or perhaps because it is a software that you have no control over what is presented? Presenting materials students have already learned seems like a waste of learning time. Also, how can a parent view a curriculum when it is not owned by the district? This administration touts their mission, as we were already expressed, of having rigorous learning experiences that serve our diverse community. It is ironic that our district has paid $40,000 for an equity survey and $150,000 for a Director of Equity and Inclusion, yet this topic has seemed to create quite the inequitable and discriminatory position for the opted-out students. How are they receiving equitable and fair, rigorous, or supportive education that is not even taught by a human teacher within our district? So here we have a Board where five people approve the recommendation from Lisa Small to adopt the NSES standards, but did not approve curriculum, books, or lessons. As well, the Board has not approved the opt-out curriculum, or anything about the status or process of the opted-out students, even though this material is set to be taught in the month of April, another nebulous date that will creep up on students and parents. Even the parent excusal form has no due date, which again, I am sure is by design, so parents will miss a deadline which they did not know existed, resulting in their student not being able to opt out. I know the answers to my questions are easily attainable, and as such, I'm requesting a written response within the next five business days. Additionally, since the Board has not approved any of the curriculum, books, or lessons for both sets of students, I request the Board pause the implementation of the comprehensive sex education curriculum until you have seen and approved all self-taught lessons and curriculum being utilized, and also devise a more truthful and complete communication to parents. In this communication, I highly suggest you stop changing words and phrases, have clear links on where to find information, and not omit important context, all in an effort to mislead parents, miss deadlines, and have an overall unclear understanding of exactly what you are attempting to teach. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy, Stacy Gale, followed by Jennifer Dow.
Good evening, my name is Stacy Gale, and I'm a resident of D211. I'd like to thank Mr. Hildebrand for the invitation to the upcoming Parent-Teacher Discipline Advisory Committee and for his timely response and appreciation for my feedback. Typically, the administration in this building takes the maximum-allowed time before responding, and sometimes they don't respond at all. At the moment, I'm awaiting a response from Dr. Small for an email I sent February 1st. It was refreshing to receive a respectful acknowledgement from Mr. Hildebrand. So let's talk about safety and discipline. Sadly, another violent situation happened at Friend, requiring a student to be transported to the hospital via ambulance. Parents have been expressing concerns over safety for months. I guess an ambulance was finally enough motivation for this administration to sc-. I guess an ambulance was finally enough motivation for this administration to schedule the Parent/Teacher Disciplinary Committee meeting. Thankfully, it was a trip to the hospital and not the morgue. How many of you board members have reviewed the five essential survey results for our district? Did you know that only 33% of students feel very safe in the bathrooms at Frem High School? Did you know student disrespect for teachers is a problem to a great extent, increased by 640%, and disorder in the hallways is a problem to a great extent, increased by 800%, according to teacher responses for Palatine High School? Parents have been sounding the alarm. Teachers have been sounding the alarm. Students have been sounding the alarm. Finally, parents and teachers will be allowed to work together to discuss in an effort to stop the chaos and provide a safe learning environment for students and a safe work environment for teachers. I hope in the future the district administration does more to bring parents and teachers together for the betterment of the community. I hope the board respects concerns of the parents and adds pausing the implementation to the March Board meeting as just requested. I hope the board holds the administration accountable to board policy requiring curriculum approval, as well as the advertised district commitment to education equality for all students, not just those who agree with your implementation of national sex ed standards. Mr. Rosenblum, I recently heard you tell the public the administration would present the curriculum to the board this month, and the board would vote to approve. Yet I don't see it on the agenda. Why did you lie to the public? You have the opportunity to be a man of your word and add the pause to the comprehensive sex ed for future discussion at the March meeting. To ensure the administration hears to the board policy where the board approves the textbook and curriculum. Why should a child who opts out receive a subpar education?
Thank you. Jennifer Dahl, followed by Teri Paulson.
My name is Jennifer Dahl, and I'm a parent of two students in District 211. Even though Ms. Cavill isn't here tonight in person, I will speak to her regardless.
I'm going to interrupt. I would ask that you speak about a topic instead of a person, a sitting board member. Please be respectful.
Okay, well, my topic is because she's seeking reelection for the board.
Then please speak to something that relates to our... I know she's running for the school board. She is currently a sitting board member. However, I'm very concerned about possible disparaging remarks and something that might be extremely insensitive and may...
Point of order. Are you seriously directing?
Wow, this is public comment.
Please let me finish. Please let me finish. I'm just asking you to be courteous...
Are you afraid of my comments?
I'm asking you to please speak to the entire board. Please.
Okay. As Ms. Cavill seeks reelection, I find it quite interesting that she never replied to my question last month when I asked each board member that I spoke to to email me back, and she did not. So I guess silence is my answer. Mrs. Klimkowitz, I never heard back from you either. So as the board president with a direct question regarding a fellow board member, you ignored a parent's concern. Mr. Rosenblum, we're three for three, I guess. You also did not answer my question last month. As someone who is also seeking reelection, I find it interesting that you could not give me a reason, as evidenced by your silence, on why once the board members were approved to be on the Wellness Committee, you didn't direct the question back to the administration on why the parents weren't approved to be part of it like you originally asked them to be. You don't care about the parents who are the people you represent. You ignore them. Lisa, while I do appreciate your response to my email, but as my reply email to you stated, you never answered my question. It really was a simple yes-or-no answer, but instead you gave me a run-around response that had nothing to do with asking you if you believe it is in the best interest for Ms. Cavill to remain on the board. And I'm still awaiting your reply. I am a parent of a sophomore student and received the Level Green email communication on Monday, as Ms. Steele communicated to you guys as well. Nowhere, I repeat, nowhere, in that comprehensive sexual health education email does it state that District 211 adopted SB 818? Or the NSES? How are parents supposed to know that you changed the curriculum when you don't tell them? Where is your commitment to transparency as stated in your value statement? All of the Board of Education members, including Lisa Small, I attempted to email all of you tonight at 6:52 PM. I received an email back from each of your accounts indicating that my email address had been blocked. I want this fixed tomorrow with an email stating that it is. I have every right as a parent in this district to be able to communicate with all of you. The email that I was going to send you was the email that I received as a parent, so that you can see for yourselves that in the direct communication from the Wellness Department chairs, there is zero transparency. When you link the scope and sequence via a link without any indication something has changed in the body of the initial letter, it's bound to be overlooked, which is something you likely want. It's appalling, Lisa, how deceptive you and your administration are being. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Paulson, one moment, please. I'd like to respond and why I asked the question.
No, it's a realized, remember? I'm not responding.
No, we can respond if necessary. What I want to... Would you please let me finish? What I'd like to say is there's a concern about safety, and that is why I asked you to please be respectful. That's all. I don't want to block anyone from being able to speak, but right now, there's a concern about safety. That is why I asked you. Ms. Paulson, and then the last speaker will be Amy Nelson.
I'm not sure what comments have to do with safety, but we do have First Amendment rights, and we intend to exercise them. All right. Tonight, I'd like to address all of you, with the exception of Mr. Kramer and Mr. Dombrowski, once again. And I'd like to start by asking you a question. Do you really know what side you're on? Do you really know? Because you are carrying out the plans of wicked people who are hurting children. You have supported the implementation of comprehensive sex ed in our schools, and I have no doubt that if we took vote today, you wouldn't remove a single obscene book from your libraries. After all, all the worldly, smart, important, and powerful people are on your side, aren't they? But do you know what Jesus said about the world? He said that the world hated Him, and it will hate us too if we follow Him. So being hated by the world is actually a very good sign. Do you know where comprehensive sex ed comes from? Because its history is an ugly one. It goes back to Dr. Alfred Kinsey. Kinsey is often portrayed as a self-sacrificing saint. Kinsey was a monster. Kinsey solicited the sexual abuse of children, toddlers, and babies as young as two months old. His most famous book includes data about children being stimulated to orgasm. Kinsey wanted to prove that children are, quote, "naturally sexual from birth," end quote. And it's worth noting that Kinsey's definition of a pediatric orgasm included crying, screaming, and convulsions. Kinsey also set out to prove that the people living in his day and age, which was the 1940s, weren't living according to the sexual morals of the time. He did so by interviewing convicted sex offenders, prostitutes, and homosexuals, and he claimed that this data represented the entire population. Kinsey was a fraud, and the world ate it up. Kinsey claimed that between 26% and 50% of married men and women cheat, and that up to 50% of farm boys have sex with animals. Kinsey was trying to normalize perversity. According to PBS, he hired a videographer to film he and his staff having sex. In other words, he made porn with his employees. Finally, Kinsey claimed that pedophilia was not necessarily harmful to children. The real problem, according to Kinsey, is that, and is all the fuss made about pedophilia by parents and policemen. That's what upsets a child. So what does all that have to do with us now? Well, one of Kinsey's disciples, Mary Calderon, founded CICUS. His co-author, Wardell Pomeroy, an open advocate of pedophilia, was one of the founding board members of CICUS. CICUS pioneered comprehensive sex ed. And CICUS is, of course, one of the chief architects of the NSES, which you just approved. Their worldview has not changed. Their goals have not changed. The tagline for CICUS is "Sex Ed for Social Change." And where all this is going is evident to all but the most blind. We are tearing down statues of men who actually accomplished great things, but a monument to a perverted, sadomasochistic advocate of pedophilia still stands on the grounds of Indiana University. And Hollywood made a flattering movie about him in 2004, knowing full well what he had done. That's the world. And its wicked nature...
You have one minute remaining.
Its wicked nature is becoming more and more evident every single day. I wanted to make sure tonight that you really understand what side you're on. For what good will it do a person if he gains the whole world but forfeits his soul? Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Nelson.
Thanks for squeezing me in. Good evening. There's been a lot going on over the past few months in this district. I mean, well, actually, the past couple of years, really. As someone who's been attending board meetings pretty regularly since 2017, I'm here to express my disappointment in this board. I'm going to try and say this as respectfully as possible, because I know your jobs are difficult. You're all constantly bombarded with opinions, some shared with you nicely, some not so much. But let's be honest, based on the elections that most of you went through over the past few years, you had to know what you signed up for, the good, the bad, and the ugly. For almost two years, I have been watching this board consistently vote 5 to 2 on many larger, more important issues. It has become a joke to many in the community, because we often wonder why you even bother going through the farce of holding your roll call vote. Discussion is no longer discussion. Many of you use that time to have a pseudo-discussion, where you choose to poke at each other or lecture those in the audience who don't agree with you, verbalized in a sad, condescending manner. Let's take that quote-unquote "discussion" regarding the adoption of the NSES standards. First of all, this was rushed. As a board, you had months to discuss before voting. As a board, you had months to let the community know that this was going to be voted on. As a board, you've opted to ignore it until the last possible minute. I'm going to be totally honest here. I'm still curious as to why Ms. Cavill, a professional sex ed expert, did not want to scream it from the rafters how excited she was about this new inclusive NSES standards until the moment before you voted for it. Could it be because five of you knew that it would be extremely controversial and didn't want too many people becoming aware of it before you could sneak it into a meeting and vote on it? Here's what I think some of us in the community would have liked to have seen. If you'd been willing to discuss this even one month earlier, you all could have had the opportunity to ask the administration if they could consider alternatives, rather than the nuclear, all-or-nothing approach. Could the schools have offered two different versions of the health and wellness class? Allow parents to sign their teenagers up for old sex ed or new sex ed? Instead, you opted to separate those who opt out, drawing attention to them and potentially inviting ridicule and insults, just like what some adults are experiencing from other adults. Look, if my kids were still in high school, I would not have opted them out. But not all parents think like I do, and that has to be okay, because you're all supposed to care about all students, no? Could you have changed it to make parents have to opt in to have their students taught the new NSES standards? This would have allowed all parents to make a personal family choice with no detriment to their child. Instead, the offer to opt out will potentially go unnoticed by parents or guardians who might not read the one, one email that has been sent about it. We want to see... Scratch that. We need to see this board get back to working together. The students in this district have suffered enough since March of 2020. You can make a conscious choice to change how you interact with each other and your constituents. Thank you.
That will take us to our Strategic Plan Update for Technology presentation.
Thank you for taking some time to look at an overview of the progress that we've made toward completing the 2022-23 Strategic Plan targets for technology. You'll recall that, at a high level, the technology elements of the plan address two main areas: innovation and cybersecurity. So let's drill into the specific targets for this year. There we go. This slide shows the specific targets for 2022-23, and we'll take a brief look at the progress that's been made to each of them. You may be aware that Microsoft has announced its intention to support Windows 10 through October of 2025. The migration of District 211 PCs to Windows 11 has begun. We started with a pilot project involving about 50 people across the district over the past few months. The first major block of users, about 1/3 of all users, will be upgraded this summer when those devices reach end of life. And then, moving forward, any new PCs acquired will be Windows 11. This slide addresses moving systems from on-premise to the cloud where it makes sense to do so. The decision to migrate an on-premise system to a SaaS, software-as-a-service, implementation is based on costs, operational efficiencies, improved performance, reliability, disaster-recovery capabilities of the vendor, security, and feature-set options. Currently, the Tyler HR Portal and the SharePoint document libraries have been migrated, and the Lawson GL system is planned to be migrated in the summer of 2023. The diagram on the right, the STAR topology, was the exclusive model for D-211's wide-area network until the enhanced model on the left, the MESH topology, was implemented. An advantage of the MESH topology is that it provides much more flexibility in message routing and reliability and recovery. The STAR topology with Comcast remains in place as a backup network. In recent years, funding opportunities like E-Rate and ICN have made a huge difference in the cost of being able to provide reliable, redundant networks for costs that are comparable to what...
Excuse me. I'm going to ask if you'd like to have a conversation, please step out, because it does get disturbing, and the speakers can hear the whispering. Please. It is bothering the speakers. I'm asking, Officer? I'm asking you to please be respectful and let them do their presentation, please. I'm sorry, go ahead.
In recent years, the funding opportunities like E-Rate and ICN have greatly reduced the cost and allowed the district to implement redundant networks for less than the cost of a single network just a few years ago. Here you see a number of training opportunities which have been made available to and attended by employees. Security awareness training is available to all district employees. Several infinite campus training programs, seminars, and conferences are attended regularly by employees both inside and outside of IT. Training on the extensive new college and career readiness platform, MIA Learning, has been completed, and the IT staff is working to integrate the MIA Learning system with other district systems. We attended a two-day conference from the State Board's Learning Technology Center on Student Privacy and Cybersecurity back in January. And training in the use of BitSite, the cybersecurity scoring service, was completed, and now reports are regularly analyzed and any needed recommendations are implemented. Remodeling of the administration building's data center is well underway, according to plan. Equipment and racks have been consolidated, and the size of the new data center is about 1/3 the size of the existing one. That's going to allow us to reclaim some space. The new air conditioning units have been installed, providing redundant environmental controls that are more efficient, more cost-effective, and more easily maintained than the old systems that are there currently. Plans are still in the early stages for the best use of the reclaimed space for that Unfortunately, we see news of cyber attacks against schools all too frequently in the news these days. In fact, schools now rank among the top three markets for ransomware attacks, costing taxpayers billions of dollars each year, and in some cases, forcing school closures for days while systems are recovered and restored. What you see here is the Swiss cheese model representing a layered defense approach against cyber threats. The red arrows represent various types of cyber threats, and the slices of cheese represent the defensive measures in place to combat those threats. No single layer provides adequate protection against the variety of evolving threats that are present in today's environment, so multiple layers are deployed. Each layer has its own area of focus and strength. The more layers, the stronger the defense. Even so, 100% protection against these cyber threats can never be guaranteed. You also see listed on the slide a variety of tactics currently in place to protect D211 against cyber threats emanating from around the world 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Committing to the implementation of a privileged access, access management toolset, the PAM toolset, is now a required condition for coverage by insurance carriers. We're currently in the process of reviewing Gartner research materials on the topic, discussing our options with our cybersecurity consultants and system vendors. We're participating in product demos and overall evaluating multiple products. And the plan is to have the PAM toolset in place and deployed by the end of the fiscal year. Already, the IT, excuse me, already, IT department policy and procedure best practices are in place to protect our privileged accounts. This item deals with BitSite, the cybersecurity rating service that the board approved this past October. The service is fully deployed, and the onboarding process and initial training have been completed. The first round of reports and recommendations have been received, and the recommended actions have been taken. The results are good, and as it turns out, D211's cybersecurity score is well above the education industry average. Moving forward, BitSite reports and recommendations are reviewed monthly or when impactful changes happen to the computing environment, such as new components, major systems, software, or firmware updates. Penetration testing is simulating various forms of cyber attacks against the network to determine what protected resources may be vulnerable and if any data can be compromised. This activity is conducted by companies who employ individuals known as ethical or white, or white-hat hackers. We're currently in the process of obtaining and evaluating proposals from multiple vendors with a late spring timeframe for completion of the, of this year's test. According to Verizon's annual data breach investigations report, the human element continues to be a key driver of 82% of cybersecurity breaches. Malware and stolen credentials provide a great second step after a social attack gets the bad guy in the door. This emphasizes the importance of having strong security awareness program. As planned, D211 has conducted simulated phishing attacks, according to schedule, and it's good to be able to say that employees are not only becoming more skilled at recognizing these attacks, but are also more likely to report them. Protocols have also been put in place to follow up with users who have difficulty recognizing as a simulated attacks and include additional targeted training. At the January Institute Day, the Technology Department chairs conducted sessions on recognizing and reporting phishing attacks. Additional phishing simulations and security awareness training are planned for the future. And now Scott Whitehead will update you on the latest regarding educational and instructional technology.
Thank you, Mr. Gorson. At this time, I will shift to providing information regarding District 211's educational and instructional technologies with an overview of the hardware landscape, some information on impacts of state law changes on the innovation process, and providing some future visioning as we continue to look to simplify the user experience while increasing information security, as Mr. Gorson mentioned. As a district, we have over 40 specialty computer labs. These labs have software and systems that are tailored to provide a dynamic learning experience for our students. Examples of programs that these labs support include computer-rated drafting, Project Lead the Way, and manufacturing in applied technology, digital media, video animation, and digital photography in art and media, consumer education to business workforce applications in business, programming, app development, and networking classes in mathematics, in addition to many other courses across curriculums. Every student that enters District 211 receives an iPad from the first day they attend our schools, with approximately 50% of our ninth graders receiving their iPad early to have the device available for summer school courses. Over the last 10 years, the iPad has become synonymous with learning for our students and staff. From the initial pilot through today, it is how learning is done in District 211. Our teaching faculty and teaching assistants have an iPad. Teachers use the same device that our students have to design and implement their curriculum. This allows our teachers to leverage in the inherent capabilities of the iPad to foster learning, creativity, and collaboration, as students leverage the iPad to demonstrate their understanding. Each school maintains additional devices to provide to students who may have forgotten their device at home, to use while a device is being repaired, or to be able to support other school activities, from large testing initiatives like Access or the Illinois Science Assessment, to providing accessibility devices that act as a student's communication tool. In addition to the iPad, our faculties have a dedicated laptop. Our laptop environment is a blend of Windows PC and Mac that allows our teachers to leverage the best technologies to build the optimal learning experience for students. We maintain additional teaching laptops for use by student teachers, long- and short-term substitutes, as well as for our students who are in an educational dual-credit course that may be the first step towards them becoming future teachers. Transitioning to the recent legislation that impacts educational technology, Illinois Public Act 105, the Student Online Personal Protection Act, or SOPA, as it's more commonly referred to. The goal of the legislation is to ensure the privacy of student data as personalized learning deepens through the use of new and innovative educational technologies. The legislation was passed in 2019, just prior to the worldwide pandemic, and came into full effect in July of 2021. The legislation defines both educational technology and what is considered personally identifiable information, or PII. When we reference educational technologies, we're actually referring to a wide variety of resources: various hardware, traditional software, modern apps, and websites, all that may capture or contain student information. The legislation is also written specifically towards educationally-focused software companies, requiring a data privacy agreement to be in place between the organization and a school district prior to the installation or use of technology with students. District 211 follows the National Data Privacy Agreement for Illinois. This agreement allows District 211 originate a full data privacy agreement, as well as piggyback off other established agreements that are on file with the state, with all of the binding characteristics fully enforced as if we had originated the agreement. The legislation also outlines 29 specific data components when it defines PII. These components include items like food purchases, disabilities, dependency records. Search activity and voice recordings are all, among other explicitly defined data pieces outlined in the legislation. Bringing the last few slides together, innovation and discovery of impactful educational technologies starts at various places. It may come directly from the technology team introducing new technologies and concepts, or through instructional coaches, our teachers, our department chairs, and sometimes students. When a technology for investigation emerges, the Technology Department chair meets with teachers and departments to understand their needs and the challenges they would like to address and the ideas they would like to explore. Teachers evaluate various technologies from a content, connection, collaboration, and curricular impact, and the technology group supports and enhances this process at every level. Once a technology progresses forward enough, the technology team finalizes both a compatibility review to ensure our systems and devices will best support the technology, and moves through our SOPA process to ensure that the vendor and the applications are in compliance with Illinois state law. With national data privacy agreements in place, the technology progresses forward through the curricular departments to the curriculum committees for discussion and evaluation prior to coming to the Board of Education for formal approval. Throughout this process, training, integration, and support are put in place to deepen the staff and student experience. This brings us to where we are today. All educational technologies must be SOPA compliant. At this time, we have 836 technologies that are fully approved. 55 of technologies are currently under review, and eight are expected to be going forward to spring curriculum committee rounds. Looking forward, one of the key focuses of the Educational Instructional Technology Group is working towards simplifying the user experience while increasing safety and security for our systems and of data, and of David, and of data privacy. As Mr. Gorson mentioned earlier, we are transitioning more systems to leverage single sign-on SSO that is further secured through duo multi-factor authentication. Single sign-on allows for a user to have a single credential to remember. This has been shown to increase account security, as the user has fewer logins and passwords to remember, and therefore, those passwords are longer and more complex. Paired with multi-factor authentication like Cisco Duo, this process greatly reduces the likelihood of a socially engineered login compromise. In District 211, SSO is already in place for staff computer login, email, and a number of other critical systems. In addition, we've begun the process of migrating the login for our Google for Education workplace over to Active Directory SSO authentication. In addition to securing login activities, we've begun a process for transitioning our mobile devices, iPads and laptops, to device-based network access. This is a handshake between district-owned devices and our networks, ensuring that only district devices can access our secure, non-guest network. Our future efforts to simplify the user experience will be twofold. We are currently building the roadmaps for, to bring additional SSO-capable resources under single sign-on, and we're also building a roadmap to bring system-based rostering to our highly-used services like Schoology, our textbook platforms, and other classroom and curricular technologies. Rostered services make changes to access based on a student's schedule. As students enter and leave courses, specific resources for those classes become available or access is removed when a course is concluded. Rostered services help to streamline access while increasing security and data privacy. And I'll turn it back to Mr. Gorson, who will speak towards the 2324 school year.
What you see here is a list of the 2023-2024 strategic plan targets for technology. You'll notice the district telephone system is slated for replacement. It's effectively reached end of life. That, and the modernization of this boardroom's audio and video systems will be major projects for next year. So at this point, we're pleased to entertain any questions, comments, wonderments?
Mr. Jambrowski?
Sure. Thank you for the presentation. I just have a couple of quick, brief questions. The first one is the cyber liability insurance requirements, or the monitoring. Is there any staff training as part of that liability insurance, or is it just a blanket agreement that pretty much covers anything?
There's actually quite a bit of components, including training, as well as many of the items that you saw today in order for us to be eligible for that liability insurance.
Okay, so based on that, what components within the presentation are required for the liability insurance?
Within the, within the presentation, the one element that was required is the Privilege Access Management Toolset.
Okay, thank you. The "know before you go," is that optional or required training? I've done some of that training as a requirement, and I'm just curious the extent of the implementation of that.
In terms of the liability coverage, is that-
Is it part of the liability coverage? I don't believe it is, unless I misunderstood.
I don't know if it's referenced in the coverage itself, but I know last year when we spoke with our carriers and insurance consultants, that really was pretty much a condition, was ongoing security awareness training and phishing simulation was essentially a, a condition for coverage as well.
And that's for all staff?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay. So the duration of that training, that it takes about a, would you say about an hour and a half to two hours per quarter?
We do, we do various training along the way. So for example, I think it was referenced in the presentation, we just had a January Institute training session. People who are not passing our phishing simulations have additional "know before" security awareness training that they need to do.
Okay. So, so we set time aside during Institute Days for that specifically?
There was for January.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies and answers my question. And then the last question I had was the target for the Windows 11 transition and Office 21 transition, is that still slated to be completed by 2026-27, or based on the trial implementation that may go quicker?
It may go quicker.
Okay. What is your impression as far as completion of that rollout?
So far, it's, it's been pretty good. We're still kind of wringing out a few glitches here and there, but it's going, I think, smoother than we had hoped initially. Sometimes those Windows upgrades can be a bit confusing, but so far, so good.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenblum?
First of all, thank you also for the presentation and the explanation of what's going on. Using technology has been hugely important to our students, staff, and community over the last few years, right? And I think it's great that we've been very fortunate to be able to have the funding and the resources to provide our students and staff, for instance, with the technology to be able to continue their education, albeit in a different format and maybe not as we liked. I thought the Swiss cheese diagram was very visual for me, right? To be able to see some of those things getting stopped and some of those things getting through. Could you share with us, from a phishing simulation perspective, because that seems to be of interest here, who all's getting those tests, I'll call them, right? To maybe send out some information? I know I just got one the other day from my full-time employer, and I passed because I didn't open the document that was sent to me. But I'm wondering, because we have so many people that are getting communication from us or being able to access our systems, I'm wondering at what levels that simulation is being performed to individuals so that we can assess their skills and perhaps their being able to avoid the concerns that we have? Who all's getting that?
Every user that has an account with the district gets the training, and they're involved in the simulations.
So when you say an account, is that an email account?
Yes, right.
Okay, so...
Because that's a delivery mechanism for the phishing, right?
So has this board been trained? And have we been a part of the phishing simulation?
You've been part of the phishing simulations, and you've received the communications. I could certainly send that out again, if necessary, with links to how to access the online training.
I'd like that, and I'd like to maybe be part of the phishing expedition to see, you know, because I don't recall getting anything and going, oh, I shouldn't, you know, I need to report this, right? Versus opening it or clicking on the link or what have you. Maybe I just haven't been selected, so, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Kramer? Mr. Bradley?
No, thank you very much. It's pretty standard, but thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. It was informative. It's a lot, and technology just kind of continues to change over time, and you have to really keep up with it. Dr. Small, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I'd like to thank both Gary and Scott. Gary Gorson is our Chief Technology Officer in terms of overseeing all of our technology in the district, including our infrastructure, as well as our educational components. And Scott Weidig is the District Technology Department Chair, which means he is a department chair at Schaumburg High School, but then also is the leader of all of our technology department chairs across the district. So thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate your time.
That will take us to our... Okay, that'll take us to our consent agenda items. I've received one request to remove one of the items from the consent agenda. Is there any other items that someone would like removed? Okay, so the recommended action is, it's going to be three different motions. The recommended action is that consent agenda with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 19th, 2023, and the removal of Item G, Resolutions Authorizing Intervention in Proceedings Before the State Property Tax Appeal Board be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Stane.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye. Abstain.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The second recommended action is that the minutes of the regular meeting of January 19th, 2023 be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Abstain.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
And that brings us to our third... Oh, I'm sorry, me. Aye. Thank you. That brings us to our next item, that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing intervention in proceedings before the State Property Tax Appeal Board, which seeks an assessed valuation reduction in excess of $100,000 for property tax year 2021, and further authorize Franzic as the Board of Education's legal representative to file requests to intervene in appeal proceeding forms with the Property Tax Appeal Board on the property for which the district receives notification of appeal. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Again, I think that sending resources after businesses in our community sends the wrong message. I personally like having banks in the community and sending attorneys to contest their process to appeal, I think, is disincentive of those businesses staying within our communities.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd like to point out that for the past two years, almost three years, this board has approved, until five months ago, all except one of these requests as a unanimous board, except for one who voted present and one who voted not in favor of. Otherwise, they've all been approved. So I'm challenged in having them continue to not be unanimously approved as they were until five months ago. That's all.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion passes. All right, then that takes us to Freedom of Information, and that's an information item, unless anyone has some questions? Okay, the next item is our Class Size Committee Report. Again, it's an information item. Dr. Small?
The master schedule development at each school is a tremendous task taken on by the Student Services Director, who works to develop a schedule to accommodate as many students as possible for their graduation requirements and chosen electives. The creation of the schedule involves class size agreements, room assignments, and teacher availability, and involves algorithms followed by hand adjustments for unique instances that are all a part of this complex system. The report that's presented tonight to the board is an information item, occurs after each semester, showing the number of individual classes that have more students than prescribed by the scheduling guidelines. This semester, the report indicated that 24 of 3,450 individual classes are in that category. My gratitude to our Student Services Directors in each school, including Fred Rasmussen at Palatine High School, Tracy Baffia at Framed High School, Bridget Kane at Conant High School, Yasi Delgado at Schaumburg High School, and Jennifer Beers at Hoffman Estates High School, for the work they do each semester in creating the schedule within the parameters given to them.
Any questions or comments? I think this is a huge task to be able to do this, and, you know, possibly not everyone is aware of all the time and everything that goes into it, and we do work with the teachers in regards to establishing this.
I know it's a big puzzle. What happens with the overages if you can't resolve them? They're five of 29.
The overages don't get resolved. If they were... There are two things that are looked at. One is an individual class, and the other is the total teacher overload. So an individual class may have an overload, but the total teacher overload does not.
So do they stay in the class or they get moved?
They stay in the class.
Okay. It's just a numbers thing, basically. We don't like to have overages.
That's correct.
Okay. But they stay in the class?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, then that will take us to the 2023-2024 financial calendar, including the budget and levy sequence. Dr. Small?
Tonight's agenda item for the financial calendar includes the development of the budget and the levy. The year-long financial calendar is outlined in this item, and is just a reminder of the process. My thanks to Chief Operating Officer Lauren Hummel and Controller and Treasurer Barb Peterson and their staff as they work through each month and move us through the financial process.
Any questions? All right. With that, we'll move to unfinished business, and the recommended action is that the board policy file JEF, Release Time for Religious Observance, be modified as proposed and added as an active board policy on board docs. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion passes. The next recommended action is that the board of edu... The board policy file JGA, corporal punishment and use of physical force be modified as proposed and added as an active board policy on board docs. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
And that motion passes. The next recommended action is that the board policy file BCA, Board of Education Organizational Meeting, be modified as proposed and added as an active board policy on board docs. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, let me sneak it in here. What about the cell phone hotel policy that we were working on for two months? We're going to see that pretty soon?
Point of order, what does that have to do with the organizational meeting policy?
Let's finish this one, and then we can...
Well, it's unfinished or new business. It's unfinished business from before because it was brought up, and it's not addressed anywhere in the agenda.
Mr. Kramer, let's vote on this, and then we can ask Mr. Schumacher, okay?
Sure.
I apologize. Where are we with the...
There was a discussion, now you call a vote, unless somebody else has a discussion.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right.
Question asked.
Mr. Schumacher, do you have an idea when that'll be coming, and we'll have a meeting in regards to that?
We will shoot for March.
What's holding it up?
March is our next board meeting.
Okay, so we'll have it in March?
Okay.
So we're looking at March then. All right. Thank you. All right, the next item is under new business, and it's the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve Sound Incorporated to upgrade the public address system at William Framed High School and Hoffman Estates High School at a total cost not to exceed $1,386,115. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Dr. Small, I'm sorry, Dr. Small, you want to add something, and then...
At the May 12, 2022 Board of Education meeting, the board approved the engagement of architects, engineers, or specific services to present bids and project costs for auditorium improvements, including ADA accessibility, air conditioning, and the applied technology classes in the remaining four schools and the public address system improvements. Tonight, you are presented with the upgrades to the public address systems for Framed and Hoffman Estates High Schools. The PAs are used on a daily basis and are a critical component of our safety and security plans.
Mr. Dombrowski, you were going to ask something?
Yeah, I noted that our approval of the PA upgrades for Conant was $177,000. This is over $1.3 million. Is there a good justification for that variation in costs?
Yes, they are... Conant High School already had this system in place. There were just some components that needed to be upgraded to bring their system up to the level that we are desiring in all of our schools. These two schools have a completely different system that is currently in place, so it is a much more extensive process to be able to upgrade them. It's a full head-end unit, all the new wiring, all of the various components across the system. As we look forward to the next two schools, Schaumburg High School has a similar full system upgrade to these two, and Palatine will have a... will be more closely aligned to Conant, although they have a few additional components that need to be upgraded.
Thank you.
Two questions. One, is this a safety and security concern? Is that why we're kind of adding necessary, not bells and whistles, but necessary components?
It is certainly a very critical safety system within our building, our primary communication system, and there are additional safety features that are included on the current upgraded system.
The committee is obviously very concerned about safety in our schools, so that's good. Do we expect this to cost... The one that you talked about, is that going to cost over a million bucks too, the next one?
We have two more to go, and I would expect that they will be less than this in total, but I can't tell you that at this point. I would have to... We'll have to get updated quotes on that information. We have initial quotes, and we're within the budget parameter that the board had established, but certainly those are ever-evolving with the cost of technology, so I don't want to misquote on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, that next item is the recommended that the Board of Education authorize a one-year contract with Relay for the period between July 1st, 2023, and ending on June 30th, 2024, with the option to renew the contract for up to four years. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
District 211 is eligible for Medicaid reimbursement in two program categories, administrative outreach services and school-based services. The vendor for administrative outreach services is selected by the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services. The motion before you tonight is for the administrative outreach services. This program reimburses school districts for services provided to at-risk students prior to identification for special education services.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please?
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
That takes us to the next item, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to retain lobbyists to support the district in response to mega project pilot legislation. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I didn't hear a second.
I did.
Okay, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. Any discussion? Dr. Small?
There are three school districts involved in the land that formerly housed the Arlington Park International Racecourse and is now owned by the Chicago Bears. The complete, approximately 320-acre site, is contained within all of District 15 Elementary School Taxing District. Within the high school taxing districts, 211 and 214 split the property, with most of the land being within the District 214 Taxing District. At this time, there are no building plans approved by the Village of Arlington Heights, but the mixed-use plan publicly presented by the Bears' organization includes a stadium, office, rental, and residential buildings. Currently, the proposed building plans have the stadium entirely within the District 211 Taxing District, with no residential buildings in that area. It is unknown exactly how many new students may be a part of the residential area that are yet to be proposed and/or built. Those are all currently proposed in Districts 15 and 214. Legislation known as the Mega Project Assessment Freeze and Payment Law, typically referenced as the Mega Project, was recently introduced to the Illinois General Assembly as Senate Bill 1350. The legislation would amend primarily the property tax code... The legislation would amend primarily the property tax code to create a development incentive for any company seeking mega-project status, but immediately would benefit the redevelopment of the current Arlington Park International Racecourse with a proposed Bears football stadium and the mixed-use development area. Though it is anticipated that the current language of the bill will change over time, the attachment to the agenda details the comparison of the current language of the bill compared to a TIF. It is unknown whether Bears' organization plans on proposing the entire property as a mega-project or having some portions as part of a TIF. This new proposed mega-legislation freezes the assessment value for the property for up to 40 years. Any improvements on the property or future new development on the property for up to 40 years would not generate any new taxes paid by the company and seen by the taxing bodies. This freeze on property taxes for up to 40 years allows for tax certainty for the company during development, and in return, the company pays what is called a special payment in addition to the frozen valuation of property taxes. The special payment is divided among all tax bodies at the same tax rate as the first year of the mega-project. The legislation is currently written so that the special project is an individual agreement solely between the company and the local municipality. The recommendation tonight for hiring a joint lobbyist to represent all three school districts for the current legislative session is to ensure the interest of the school districts is written into the legislation if the legislation is being considered for approval. This is a potential 40-year decision that directly impacts school districts across many villages, and the legislation is currently written so that decisions are made by solely the Chicago Bears' organization and the Village of Arlington Heights. Economic development is a vital component of all of our villages, and the school districts recognize and support that development. The Village of Arlington Heights has been ongoingly open and forthright in meeting with the school districts, and we do appreciate that. But when it comes to tax payments and the assessment evaluations, the school districts must have the say in the decision-making. The ability to say in the decision-making is currently not found in the legislation. The legislation currently designates that the tax and special payment decisions are made by the Village of Arlington Heights and the Bears' organization. Therefore, the three school district taxing bodies, which includes all the communities in District 211, are not protected when property tax decisions are made that can be in place for up to 40 years.
I know we've received a good bit of information from Dr. Small and probably things that we've read in the paper. Any comments, thoughts, questions that you have?
Is there a motion? There's a motion right now, right?
Yes, we're in discussion.
Move to postpone the vote on this matter pending the outcome of the legislation currently on the table in Springfield. There's legislation that is not law yet.
All right, I think—
Okay.
You want to speak—
You want to wait until when?
Until Springfield votes on this mega-bill.
I think I'm confused from—this is a discussion, right? Discussion?
We've got a discussion, but he's—
Can I comment to that first?
Please.
The purpose of the lobbyist is, for right now, to engage for the draft legislations that is on there. It is expected that the legislation will change and it will evolve as it moves through the legislative body, and for us to stand back and let that occur without people fully understanding what this does to the school districts, that is not what I'm recommending. I'm recommending that we are involved—
I understand that.
—in how this unfolds, so that everybody fully understands how a 40-year decision without school districts sitting at the table could be problematic.
And that's precisely why we need to go slowly. Nobody understands this.
Let me stop—
Let me finish, Madam President, if I can.
I need a second for—to postpone, and then there could be a discussion on it.
Okay, all right.
But if there's no—
Okay, well, there's discussion, and there was no—okay.
I'll second.
May I continue now?
Yes, you may continue. Well, then we need to take a vote.
No, we—there's discussion on the sub-boarded motion.
All right, let's discuss.
Many months ago, we received communication from the administration saying the only part that affects us is the practice track in the northwest quadrant of—the that's where the stadium is going to be built. We were told that the tax revenue from that particular part of the plot or the property brought in around $50,000 a year, 50,000. When a stadium is built there, the potential is millions of dollars, all right? So what does that mean? There's essentially no downside for whatever happens out there with the legislature and/or the Village of Arlington Heights. We have no skin in the game. We can't lose. Why do we need to pay an attorney to do something which is not going to—which has no downside? I don't understand that, and I'm also disappointed that—I know this is very fast-moving, but there should have been a point in time when the administration called the board together in a special board meeting and said, "Look, this is what's going on. Here's the fact as we know it," and then bring in somebody so we can understand it. This is very complex, very confusing, and I fully appreciate that a decision can go awry and mess up a lot of stuff. The reality is, this is an economic development engine that is probably going to have more of an impact on the area than Woodfield Mall did how many years ago? So we need to slow this down. The Bears are in—the Bears are in the driver's seat, and they have the leverage, and Arlington Heights is the dealmaker. We don't have enough information as a board. This is not an administrative—administration prerogative. This is a board prerogative, and to bring it to the vote at this point is really, really not good.
And we've been given information—you had an opportunity to—
For 10 minutes at a meeting.
You've been given quite a bit of information—
In 10 minutes.
You've been—there has been information that's been given to us. Dr. Small, can you address that?
Lauren, can you explain what happens if the current legislation passes?
So if the current legislation passes, as it is—in its current form, there is a assessed value that is in place that freezes.
And could that assessed value be on land that has nothing built on it?
It could be—yes. There is not a—there is a process by which it has to go to the Department of Revenue for approval. They will base it on the evaluation in the year prior. So there is a definite possibility that the Bears have now purchased this property, that they clear the property, and then the assessment actually drops because it is on vacant land versus property with facilities that are on it right now. So if the valuation is frozen, the district continues for up to a 40-year period to receive property tax revenue on that frozen amount. What the legislation is—how it's proposed is that there is this payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot on this increment. What we are asking and what the importance of the lobbyist in the discussion while it's in bill form is that we have essentially a seat at the table to be able to discuss what happens to that payment in lieu of taxes, because otherwise, we are at a very small level. As this continues to develop in form and the property taxes continue to—or the valuation of the property continues to rise, there is no additional money that comes. So while you're referencing millions of dollars, that doesn't come to us under the current law, other than this potential payment in lieu of taxes, which is where we find it very important to have some—
Yeah, I understand that we may not get a lot—we may not get what would be the typical commercial property tax that we do. It may be substantially reduced, but it's going to be a heck of a lot more than 50,000 bucks that we get right now.
No, it is—it could be less than what we're getting now.
$50,000?
I believe it's $200,000, but it's—that is on a property that is assessed right now with a racetrack on it. If they knock down all of these buildings, we get—we do not get taxes on the increment as the facility is built.
My understanding is that the assessment is on each parcel of land, and the parcel of land that we're getting tax money from is what's now—or used to be the racetrack.
In 40 years.
The practice track.
In—so the frozen period is 23 years with the very accessible ability to increase that to 40 years. So somewhere between 23 to 40 years is when we would receive property taxes on the development that would occur on that property. We would not receive anything until then, and that's why this payment in lieu of taxes that's developed—or that's proposed in the mega-legislation bill is so very critical.
At the outside, does the district right now in our financial position need another $150 million?
The—what we're looking at is the ability for us to—there is economic development that is going on. There is—there is going to be—and this is—I'm speaking for all three school districts right now—that there is going to be impact to the districts based upon this facility. And what they're looking to say is, when you're generating this additional—that growth in assessed valuation is not going to any taxing body during that time when they're supporting those additional services that are there. So, you know, to say that you're going to have a level of frozen valuation for a 40-year period without that—without the change in valuation is significant.
You're speaking Armageddon, which probably is not going to happen. The other thing—
No, that is how the bill is written.
Well, it's a possibility, sure. A meteor could hit us tomorrow. But the reality is that this thing is not fully baked. It is all rhetoric out there.
And you are correct, it is proposed legislation, and that's why—
Right, the legislation is proposed, but the facility itself and what's going to be built and what's not going to be built and when it's going to be built, that is still up in the air. I mean, yesterday, the news couldn't unscramble it. That's why I think it is prudent to wait until we have some tangible information that we can put our hat on and say, "Yeah, here's the situation." We have no idea what the situation is, other than some piece of legislation may or may not be passed in Springfield. Do we think that Springfield wants to do this? Maybe, maybe not. The only people who probably want to do it are the legislators from the city of Chicago, because the Bears are going away. We don't know that this legislation is going to pass.
So—and I agree with you. We don't know if the legislation is going to pass, and we don't know what changes could happen to the legislation during the spring session, so that the value in a lobbyist is to be there, to be the eyes and ears in Springfield, to understand what's happening with this bill, to make sure that we—as school districts are represented as it continues to go.
I understand that. We don't need that now. We don't need that now. We—that's why—I—that's why the motion to postpone pending—the pending the first vote on this piece of legislation. Until that legislation is baked, nothing—nothing's going to happen. So let's wait. There is no downside in waiting.
Madam President, I would support delaying and postponing this motion until we have identified a lobbyist and identified all the partners. Per the material—
Are you amending the—
No, I'm still discussing. The motion on the table is to postpone.
Postpone, yes.
Okay. I'm in favor of postponing. We don't know who our lobbyist is. I'm very cautious in Illinois as far as which lobbyists we employ. I'd like to know who that is before, for lack of a better term, get into bed with a lobbyist. Additionally, we only have—it states here, School District 15, 211, and 214, and others. I'm not fully aware of who the others are. I would like to know who would all be sharing this lobbyist and who it would be.
Dr. Small, can you answer—
Can you reference where it is you're saying seen and others?
Above the suggested motion in the material provided, it would be one, two, three, four, five—I believe it's the—
I believe it's referencing who is interviewing—
Fifth line—
The lobbyist.
Yeah, it's not clear to me.
The lobbyists are four districts, 15, 211, and 214.
In some—
Not adding any other school districts.
No, there are no other school districts.
There's no other school districts.
But there'll be others in the interview beyond 15, 211, and 214. Is that what the language is stating?
No, there are other—there are other people there. There are—the attorneys are there, there are other people in the interview process, but it is only those three districts.
It's—in a communication you sent to us recently, the status of selecting the lobbyists is that there was a preliminary round. I don't know who—I don't know who interviewed the lobbyist. Were you involved in the interview of the lobbyist?
Yes.
You were interviewed. You were interviewer.
I was in the interview, yes.
Did you consult with the board about that? About what your questions were going to be? You did not. So that was—the first round, and now we are at a final round where somebody, probably including you, hopefully you will seek guidance from us before you select a lobbyist. Isn't that true? Isn't that the next step? Is that there's going to be a review of the finalists?
There are three districts. Ideally, all three districts agree to the same lobbyist. Therefore, the cost would be split.
Is the board going to be involved in that in your decision? This is a board prerogative, not an administration prerogative.
There—currently, each school district has had at least the superintendent, if not other people, involved in the interview process.
The board has not been directly involved in this process. This is a board prerogative.
That's correct. The board has been informed of it, but they have not been directly in the interview process.
And I object to that strenuously.
But we—that's why we have the superintendent to gather the information to lead us, and she's provided us with information in regards to this. Ms. Hummel has given us some information in regards to the costs. We've been working with the other school districts. I think we're all aware of what a TIF is and the impact that it can have on us.
It sounds from my colleagues on the board that there's interest to have more intimate involvement in who are these lobbyists, where are they coming from, what are the questions being asked, what are the answers being provided, and involvement by some members of this Board of Education on the selection process as well as the approval for a lobbyist.
I highly recommend that this board has a lobbyist. If this board feels that they want to have their entire say over who the lobbyist is and hire them as the sole lobbyist for District 211 and pay the full price, how you want to do is entirely up to you, but I—the legislation is—and the discussions are happening now.
Superintendent—
It will happen during this legislative session that is happening now through May.
Okay. I'm not suggesting that we want to hire our own lobbyist. I mean, how about some proration? I mean, we have a very small piece of the pie, the other districts have a larger piece of the pie. Why are we paying the same? That's one instance. And then the process in selecting the lobbyist is—it's not right. It's not right.
Well, as I said, if this board wants to control the entire process as opposed to joining the other two districts but still have a lobbyist, then I suggest you go forward with that intention, because when we're working with three districts, for one district to have complete control over it is not going to happen unless you hire them solely yourself.
I really think we need to take a look at unity between the districts. The superintendents do talk with one another. This involves all of us. It involves our communities. There's a lot more that is part of this. We were given information on how this can impact us. I really believe that this is probably the best route for us to take of getting the lobbyists to represent us.
Madam President, have we—
Can I finish?
Yep.
Thank you. And work— Thank you. And work with the other two school districts and have a voice there at the table. Because we know how the legislators do things at times. Sometimes it's hurry up and it's the voice that they might be listening to. Mr. Bradley?
Pete Winfrey, go ahead.
Oh, I was, I just wanted to ask the question on that, who best represents us? Have we reached out to our elected representatives, our state senator or our state representatives in the area as our voice?
Yes. What do you, what do you mean, who represents us? They represent us. It was, the mega project was sponsored by Senator Gillespie.
Correct. And we've had discussions directly with Senator Gillespie.
Yes.
And, and it's still the recommendation that we procure a lobbyist to then talk to Senator Gillespie in lieu of our conversations with Senator Gillespie.
The lobbyists work with all of the legislative body through the entire state.
We also do not know what committee the bill will be assigned to and what the legislators, there's various legislators that will be potentially involved in it at that point. It is, from all discussions that we have had, it's been the recommendation that the three districts work collaboratively to have strength in the voice in Springfield.
Districts two-fourteen and District fifteen have already approved this. They're waiting for us. Mr. Bradley?
Well, as we all know, the Bears are in the driver's seat. A lot of moving components. Is it possible to have a board member if we pass this in the next round of conversations? Or interviews, if you will?
Certainly, the, a board member or representative can be a part of that. We would have to do that very quickly. There are, the lobbyist groups can come after we hire one, present to any of the boards and give updates. They will give updates that will be forwarded to the board.
Yeah, I would, I'll withdraw my motion provided that this Board of Education interviews the final candidates.
Or at least be at the interview is what I would like.
No, the board. The board needs to hear what, what the candidates say.
Correct, yeah.
I would suggest that if this board wants to fully control the lobbyists, that you set a motion that we are hiring our own. Otherwise, we are slowing down the other two districts.
And I'd like to add one more comment regarding the, the motion, which may or may not be off the table, to postpone. The idea is not to lobby or request a change to a bill once it's done. And it sounded to me like the motion was, let's wait to get a lobbyist to lobby on our behalf for a bill that's already approved in the legislature, if I, if I'm maybe misunderstanding that.
What was that? Were you commenting on my subordinate motion?
Yes.
No, I, I don't, we don't have enough information. We don't have enough information and the board is not involved enough.
Right.
So until, until, until certain things tangibly have happened, which would be the legislation either passing or not, and/or a round, I mean, the other districts pick, pick whoever they want, and then we can say yea or nay. If we don't, if we don't like their pick, we pick our own or not, and, and we move on. We just, we don't have this, it would, my position would be completely different if we, if, if the development of the property would include, you know, a thousand new apartments and condominiums with a whole bunch of students. But that is not the case. That is not the case.
That has not been guaranteed to us yet.
Well, that is true. No, I agree. I agree.
That has, that has, that has only shown up as proposals. The Arlington, Village of Arlington Heights has not approved that. And once this legislation gets passed or not passed, if it, whatever form it's in, it is now too late for us to do anything.
It's not too late.
Once the legislation is done, it's really hard to make any kind of changes to it.
We can't make changes.
I think we have to be at the table in regards to it and be working at it.
So my responsibility is to represent this community and this school district and the financial potential of a, the potential impact of a frozen tax evalu, tax valuation of property, be it a stadium, be it a residential area, a business area, or whatever. I've got to think, and I'm not, I don't have a crystal ball here, but I've got to think that the value of a training track at a racetrack that's no longer in use and the value of a stadium property twenty years from now, thirty years from now, is going to be different. And I would like our district and community to be able to take advantage of the potential increase in valuation and taxable income that this district can receive in support of our community and our students. I would like to see that be available. But from what I'm hearing about the legislation right now, as it's proposed, and I understand it's going to be changed or be evaluated or tweaked or whatever, is that it's frozen at the current property valuation and that whatever's put there, whatever valuation that that is depicted to be, years from now, we would not be able to take advantage of that. And I think that would be a terrible, terrible thing for our community and our district.
I, I don't, I disagree with you. I think, I think what we hear, what, are you finished, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think what we heard is that step five or step nine or whatever is after the legislation is passed, the property taxes are fro, the property value is frozen at some level, and then it's reassessed at a higher level, that that higher level, that the assessment, the future assessment, there would be negotiated payments after the, after the, after the freeze.
That would be after three years.
The taxes do not change.
The freeze is a freeze for, the, the freeze is permanent.
But then-
For forty years. For up to forty years.
Okay, but isn't, but they're going to be negotiated payments in lieu of, in lieu of a property tax bill?
That is how the legislation is written, but the negotiation takes place with the Village of Arlington Heights.
And that's when we hire a lobbyist.
But that legislation is already passed then, and that's what the legislation says. There's no mention of the school districts having any say in that discussion between the company and the local municipality.
See, that's why you hire a lobbyist. You hire a lobbyist to negotiate how much money we are going to get when all this is baked. We, you do that later, not now.
All right. Any, any other discussion?
Yes, Madam President, again, just to bring it back, we're discussing hiring a lobbyist. I, I'm not in objection to hiring a lobbyist. I would like to know who that is. And for the sake of transparency to the community, I think that that would only be appropriate. If we approve this motion to retain a lobbyist, that may never see the light of day.
All right. What we need to do is vote on the postponement first.
Okay, let, let me, let me withdraw the motion and amend the motion to postpone pending interview of, of the proposed lobbyist by the consortium. Don't like that one? Can you, can you provide an amended motion or a subordinate motion?
All right. Let's, anything else that you have to say? Do you want to withdraw this motion?
No, I won't withdraw.
Do you want to amend this motion? What do you want to do?
I won't withdraw.
Okay.
I'm not withdrawing the motion.
The motion then is, as I understand it, is to postpone the, the recommended motion of retaining a lobbyist to support the district in the mega project pilot legislation. All right, to postpone it.
Pending?
No.
There has to be, when you have a pending, you have to have a condition in which that vote is going to be, is going to be called.
That's, that's not what you had said. You wanted to postpone this as, as it is. And that was the second.
Pending, the motion included pending the, the, the vote on this mega project in Springfield.
I, I don't believe that that was, is that the way you understood? You, you seconded it, Mr. Dombrowski?
That, that was the condition that Mr. Kramer had outlined, yes.
All right. Ms. Kason, do you have that? All right. So it's to postpone it pending-
Resolution or the vote on, on the, on the bill. No matter how long it takes, there's going to be amendments.
All right. So we're voting on postponement. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No. The motion has failed. So we're back to our original recommendation that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to retain lobbyists to support the district in responding to the mega project pilot legislation. Is there any discussion on that?
I move to postpone the agenda item until a recommendation by the superintendent is presented to the Board of Education.
Second.
A recommendation.
As, as the, it's, as it's written, again, I'm just, I'll reread what it says in the material here. It is, where is it? Here we go. "The three final candidates will be advanced to a second round interview by the superintendents of District fifteen to eleven and two-fourteen and others with the expectation of making a final recommendation to the school districts shortly thereafter." So when the final recommendation is made, then we can vote to retain the recommended lobbyist.
May I make a, do we need to do something before I can request an amendment to Mr. Dombrowski's?
We need a second.
Second.
He seconded it and, yes, you can amend on it.
I'd like to ask Mr. Dombrowski if he would accept a amendment to either call a special Board of Education meeting for this vote, or if permissible, to solicit individual board member, well, I think from transparency perspective, we should probably have a special board meeting as soon as possible to discuss and vote on it.
Dr. Small, can you add anything about the lobbyists? If you've heard from them, what they were talking about, how they're planning to approach it? Is there, is there anything that stands out there that maybe you can share that can enlighten the board members so we feel more comfortable in regards to moving with, you know, any of those lobbyists?
So all lobbyists were asked the same questions. They were judged upon their ability to be connected to both legislators as well as the governor's office, and looking at their track record, who their previous clients were, and their ability to understand an education perspective. That's off the top of my head.
Okay.
I, the, before we continue voting on what is coming forward, I will, I, it is, if this board does not approve anything tonight, I will call the other two superintendents. They are waiting for my call, and I will tell them to move forward without us. They are, their scheduled board meetings were last week where they voted on this. They're waiting for our scheduled board meeting this week. But like I said, they were waiting for us, and if, if we want to do things differently, that is entirely up to this board, but I will not have them wait longer for us.
Madam President, is it, is it the understanding then that unless we basically write a blank check to a lobbyist we haven't identified yet, that we will not be able to participate in this process?
I would, well, we would not be participating with the other two school districts. That's what it appears to be.
Well, I disagree with that. It means we would not be participating with them now, but pending a, a meeting, a special board meeting, which we're going to have to have, if we say, we'll take that person that, that, that the other districts have, have hired, we're on board.
But if, if I may, I think from what Dr. Small is saying, they need to move further. If they're going to be interviewing the lobbyists to make a final decision and we're not at the table, then what kind of say do we have? Because if we don't agree to go ahead with them, there, we're, we're out. We can, you know, we can get our own lobbyists. What if we, you know, have, are not comfortable with the lobbyists that they would like? We're not there to be able to talk about it or to look at the strengths of that particular lobbyist or to have our voice heard. Well, we wouldn't be sitting at that table with them.
Okay. We don't, we don't, again, we, nothing is, nothing is absolute. We, we can wait a little bit, a little bit. Let, let, let the other two districts do their interview process, then, then bring both of those, both, bring all three candidates back, and, and the, and the Board of Education here, the two-eleven Board of Education, weighs in on which candidate we think is best. I mean, the Board of Education, I think, is, wants to be involved. I think we need to be involved. Again, this is not an administration prerogative. This is a Board of Education prerogative completely. We never delegated this to the superintendent.
Then we certainly can ask a board member to sit in on the interviewing with the lobbyists.
And what does that do?
Well, you wanted a voice at-
No, I want to vote. I want to vote.
And that's what we're trying to do right now, is to get a representative to be at this table.
No, I want to vote now on whether or not we are going to be involved in the process to, to have, to, to take a look at, at the lobbyists that two other districts have, have selected and make up our own mind. That can wait two weeks.
Dr. Small, if we, if we do not approve this this evening, are we still able to be part of the selection process of a lobbyist with the other districts? Or will it be, you did not agree to it, so we're going to move forward without you? Do you think we would still be able to participate in that?
I do not know how to answer that question.
All right. Any other comments or discussion? All right. Then we're voting on Mr. Dombrowski's proposal to postpone, as he stated, until we get, and I don't have it written down exactly, until we get a recommendation of who the lobbyist would be.
Correct.
Okay. So that is what we are voting on. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Can you come back to me? I, I still haven't decided.
Gee, if I pass, what are you going to do?
Mary Sue, who's next? Mary Sue?
Mr. Kramer, Mr. Kramer's next.
Yeah, I, I vote aye on Mr. Dombrowski's subordinate motion.
She has to call my name.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No.
I vote aye.
On the-
On, on Mr. Dombrowski's motion.
Okay. Then Mr. Dombrowski's motion to postpone passes and-
I will need, well, I will need direction on when you want to hold the board meeting for this. And I would suggest we set a date now.
I would suggest shortly thereafter, as it says in the recommendation.
I think there's some questions unanswered, Madam President.
Yes.
I think the first is that the superintendent needs to determine if she can participate in the interview process with District fifteen and District fourteen without having authorization to attain, or, I'm sorry, retain the lobbyist, and if we can provide the retainer after the lobbyist's- the lobbyist is identified. And if that is the case, if there's any urgency in our commitment to retain, and if so, when that interview process would finish, I would hate to set a meeting date prior to the second interview.
I know it's a pain in the you-know-what, but I think we can call an emergency meeting, which doesn't take two days.
Well, we certainly can call...
The special board meeting takes 48 hours.
What's that?
It's a special board meeting, and it takes 48 hours.
An emergency meeting can be held immediately.
But an emergency is different than...
Yeah, I don't think this falls into the definition of an emergency meeting.
Not an emergency meeting. Emergency is like a boiler breaks down, and we have to spend...
I think there's a lot more latitude than a catastrophe.
An emergency meeting would mean you're not giving the public notification that you're going to do something, because you have to do it so quickly because it is an emergency.
24 hours, and it's posted, under central law.
A special board meeting is 48 hours to give the public notification of what you're going to discuss at the meeting.
Dr. Small, do you think that would be a possibility, as Mr. Dombrowski had asked, of giving them a call to find out if we can still...
So the... Once a lobbyist is hired, the school board has to go forward with a contract with them and get them moving. I am going to call the superintendents tonight, I will, depending on when we get out of here, or tomorrow morning, and tell them that we did not pass the authorization for this, that we are waiting for a lobbyist to be named. It is their prerogative whether they move forward without us and contract a lobbyist or not. I am not going to speak to what they are going to do. I do not know. That's their choice.
All right. If that's the will of the board, then that's where we're going to go.
So I need to be directed. Do you want to have a special board meeting? What is it you want to have happen? You want me to bring three lobbyists to you?
Madam President, I think the direction to the superintendent was to, one, determine if District 211 can participate in the second interview for the lobbyist, when that interview would take place, and then based on those responses, then the board would be able to determine whether a special meeting would need to be held. If not, then I expect next month that the board will receive a recommendation, or the superintendent will start to interview and provide a recommendation for a lobbyist. So the authorization is to postpone a vote to hire a lobbyist until we receive a recommendation from the superintendent.
All right. Dr. Small, can you find out about the districts?
Since we are all here, and the board wants to all be involved in discussion, I'd like to put out both scenarios so the board can give me their consensus of what you want me to do. If I go forward and they say that, yes, if you select this, you vote on the lobbyists that the other two are moving forward with, we still, in the month that occurs between now and March, they are moving forward with lobbying for the districts without us. If they say no, then we are doing, I'm bringing forth still a recommendation, and you're nodding your head, but that means that there is a name coming here. It's not an interview process, and then you're voting.
Correct.
All right. Let's clarify, then. So if they say, "No, we're going to just go with District 15 and District 214," and they hire the lobbyists and they split the cost, are you then saying we would get our own lobbyist?
We...
And the cost would be, and it could be the same person?
Exactly.
But then we may be paying quite a bit more instead of splitting the cost?
That is correct. But we would be transparent to our community with who we are hiring. We would then have sole discretion over the agenda of that lobbyist, so that also provides a benefit for that premium, and we would not be potentially outvoted 2 to 1 for the interests of District 15 and District 214. So there are some trade-offs on that, I understand, and there may be a premium associated with that, but there also is the potential, if the recommendation is to use the same lobbyist, that their costs and efforts and transportation costs are redundant, and they will split the costs associated with that. I don't know, but I think it's prudent to vote on a lobbyist once we have a chance to examine who that lobbyist would be.
So I need to know, I've heard Mr. Dombrowski say something, and Mr. Kramer say something about whether they are involved in the interview of the lobbyists or not. Does this board want to be involved in the interview of the lobbyists?
I don't want to put the superintendent in a position where the Board of Education overrules a decision, a judgment call that the superintendent makes. So I believe that what Mr. Dombrowski offered is probably the most prudent thing to do, is you are involved in the process as much as they'll let you be involved. You bring back the name to us, and then we decide, understanding that we may override your decision.
How will we, how will you evaluate the lobbyists, then?
Well, we talk to them.
But they're not all three going to come and talk to us?
No, I'm saying, I don't, I don't want to, I'm changing, I'm evolving here. We don't need to see all three lobbyists. We can see the lobbyists that you would hire, and then talk with that particular individual here.
I need consensus of the board of what to do.
It sounds like, first and foremost, the importance of finding out whether or not we can continue, having voted to postpone, whether or not we can continue in the selection process with 214 and 15. That's number one. That's number one. Because then that will dictate what we do next, be it you continue to represent us in the interviewing and selection process, and then schedule a special board meeting to bring that information back to us for a vote, or if they say, "No, we're going without you," then in the March meeting, we have a recommendation to select our own lobbyist. And it could be the same lobbyist, or it could be a different person.
And is there a possibility that in March it may be too late? I don't know about the legislation, or what changes they might make, and how they're moving forward. I don't know. Okay.
In the legislative world, the sooner your lobbyist is activated for you, the more information you have.
My hope is, from a community and neighborly perspective, that 214 and 15 are okay with us continuing to be involved, even though we did not vote this evening to approve this.
All right. Let's do this, maybe to summarize. Mr. Bradley, are you in favor of Dr. Small making the contact, seeing if we can participate with them once they've decided on the lobbyists? We'd want some information about that lobbyist, and then she can get the information to us, and we can hold a special meeting. So I think that that summarizes what Dr. Small is looking for as far as consensus and what we're hearing.
Yeah, I'm in favor of defaulting to what everyone else is in favor of in this particular category now, only because time's an essence, and we're still not driving. The bears are driving, and whatever we need to do, or Dr. Small needs to do in favor of the board, I'm for it, because ultimately, it's going to come back to us to vote on it anyway.
Okay.
I agree with everything you said, except bring back information. That's step one. Step two is that person sits right there, and we talk to them live. Because ultimately, the Board of Education is going to direct the lobbyists through the superintendent on what to lobby for or not. We got to talk with the man, or woman.
Would they come to the board meeting, do you think, the lobbyists? I don't know how the lobbyists, you know, work exactly. What are your thoughts, Dr. Small?
They would come to present their company.
Okay.
And the more I hear the board talk, the board needs to decide whether they want to be in a true partnership with the other two districts, or they want to individually direct a lobbyist as to what they want them to do. Because if we join districts 214 and 15 on this, we all have to be on the same page, and one board cannot individually decide what the lobbyist is going to say. If that's what this board wants to do, then we need to hire our own lobbyist.
So it goes back to, do you want to work with District 15, District 214, and have our superintendent representing us in the selection of the lobbyists?
I'm talking about the decisions behind it.
The decisions.
When the lobbyist starts lobbying, do you want to direct them as a board? If so, then you need, I suggest we hire our own lobbyist, so that you can direct them specifically to what you want them to do.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Again, my concern is, I don't know who we are voting to hire. I want a recommendation with a name. I think the community deserves that.
And I'd like to talk with the person there in public.
And I heard, to direct them what to do, and that's what worries me, is when we go into a partnership with three districts, we're moving forward with representing school districts in general, not saying, "We're the ones with the stadium, we want it this way, you're the ones with the residential area, you want it that way." I mean, that, if you want that decision-making ability, then we hire our own lobbyists.
So we need direction on that. All right. It sounds like we need clarification. Do you want your own lobbyist, or do you want to see if we can continue working with 214 and 15, and with the lobbyists that, well, at this point, with the lobbyists that they would select that we would be comfortable with? So do you want your own lobbyist? That's the bottom line.
You looking at me?
I'm just kind of...
Mr. Bradley?
I would like to work in conjunction with the other school districts.
Okay. Mr. Kramer?
Things change quickly. Each district has their own set of priorities. We will have our own set of priorities, so I think for us, for the Board of Education, to do what the Board of Education is hired to do, we have to have our own lobbyists, even though, so we hire our own lobbyists and go our own way.
All right. You want your own. Mr. Rosenbloom?
I'd like to collaborate.
Okay. Mr. Dombrowski?
I'm in favor of collaborating with 15 and 214. I think our interests are aligned with perspective of just the legislation versus our particular issues here.
All right. So the consensus is to work with the other school districts and to collaborate with the under...
Consensus, but that's the will of the board.
That's the consensus, you know, right now, because that was the question that was asked, so we can give Dr. Small proper direction as to how to proceed. All right. So if you can get hold of the other two superintendents, explain to them what we're looking for, and then get back to us as soon as possible, when are they looking to, and I apologize...
They're waiting for us. They are ready to, they are ready to move forward as quickly as possible.
To do a final interview with the lobbyists.
Make contracts, yep. They have not, no one has sent out any contracts yet.
Do you know when that date, prospectively, would be?
They're waiting for us to move forward.
No, I mean, but there's going to be a meeting. You're not going to do it on the phone tonight, are you?
No.
You're going to sit down with the three finalists.
We're not going to do any contracts out tonight, no.
Right.
Okay, so...
But if you want to collaborate, I have to be able to tell them when you are going to make a decision. I can't say, "We want to collaborate, but you need to wait for us."
And when will the superintendent make a recommendation, Madam President?
Yeah.
All right. So the three firms, and what's the...
We'll be making a recommendation, like, very quickly.
When?
Before we can have a board meeting set up. So that's why I keep pushing.
When? Tomorrow, the next day?
It says the three final candidates will be...
It could be as early as tomorrow.
Okay.
So that's why I'm saying, if you want to have a meeting, if you want collaboration, you have to, we have to move quickly. So that's why I'm saying, set the meeting tonight. If something happens and they say, "No, we don't, I don't advertise the meeting, we don't have the meeting," and we go to March, and we present lobbyists, and you decide who you want.
Okay. Just for clarification...
As a solo group, as a solo district.
The three finalists, they're advancing to the second round of interviews, and the final, or the final interviews could be as early as tomorrow, then?
Yes. The final discussion of who would be hired by all three would be tomorrow.
Okay. Because they had been waiting for us.
They have been waiting for us. So what I, I think we're close here, if I can summarize. I've heard the will of the board that they would like to collaborate with districts 214 and District 15, but you would also like to vote on being a part of a contract to a lobbyist with a lobbyist name in the vote.
Yes.
And I am recommending to you that we set the special board meeting as soon as possible, so that the 48 hours can be given, we sit down and vote, and we are not slowing down the movement of the all three districts in any longer.
Process. Are you and the other two superintendents going to interview the candidates again, or are you just going to discuss them and decide based on a three superintendent meeting?
The, it's the superintendents, our attorney, Ms. Hummel has been in the discussions, and other superintendents have brought other of their administrative staff by choice to the discussion.
I'm confused.
Finish the line of questioning. So are you going to re-interview as in round two, or are you going to make the decision on who collectively you want to have lobbyist? You're going to do that after another face-to-face interview, or you're going to make a decision based on the information you have right now?
It'll be based on the discussions that have already been had.
So there's no...
And we've had multiple discussions with multiple lobbyists.
So there is no second interview. There's a second stage.
There's a second stage. We've had multiple discussions already with multiple lobbyists.
So you could decide that tomorrow, over the phone?
Yes, with the other school districts.
So, I'm sorry, but I'm a little confused, because part of the documentation associated to the motion reads, "The final three candidates will be advanced to a second round interview by the superintendents of District 15, 211, 214, and others, with the expectation of making a final recommendation to the school districts shortly thereafter." So my question is, have the final three candidates been advanced to a second round interview by the superintendents of 15, 211, 214, and others? Has that already occurred?
Yes, because these documents are processed for you a week in advance.
Okay. So maybe tomorrow, you could provide us, we could, we could schedule, so what you're suggesting is, we could schedule now a special board meeting to take place Monday, Saturday, whatever, and at that special board meeting, you will be prepared to give us a final recommendation of the lobbyist?
I would have a motion, let me look at the current motion.
Would have the name.
I would have the name in the motion. It'd be the same motion, but with a name.
That would be appropriate.
What other information do you want about the lobbyist? I...
Resume, CV, questions and answers.
Questions and answers.
Right. You ask certain questions, and the lobbyist provided certain answers. I'd like to see what those are.
I'm more than happy, Madam President, to do my own due diligence, once I know who the lobbyist is.
Okay. All right. Tomorrow is Friday.
May I pull up my phone so I can look at my calendar?
Yes. Then it would have to be something as quick as possible, maybe Tuesday. I would not be available on Monday, because we're doing a second round of interviews with candidates for superintendent for NSSCO.
Would it be during the daytime or in the evening?
It would be in the evening.
Okay, I mean, that sounds, it sounded like a silly question. It could be during the daytime, but I have a dental appointment that I would have to change. Could we make it early in the evening, like 5:30?
Mr. Bradley?
I won't be available either day.
Are you at work? Is it possible to, to call in? What, he would be able to call in, right?
Yes.
Um, that's something I don't want to share with the public.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosenblum?
I cannot access my calendar at this time, so I'm not able to answer. But, you know, if we have a special board meeting, I will do everything that I possibly can to attend.
Mr. Dombrowski?
I will make myself available if a special board meeting is called.
Yeah, same thing. I just kind of want to have an idea.
All right, so then we'll need to check with Mr. McGowan and Ms. Cavill, to see if they're available. Dr. Small, do you think we can do it for, for Tuesday?
We have a quorum that said they'd show up, so.
Okay, let's, so Dr. Small will speak with the other superintendents, gather the information, see where we stand, and we will plan on meeting on, on Tuesday. And Dr. Small will be able to provide us with some information in regards to the lobbyists, and also some of the questions that were asked of the lobbyists, and maybe how they responded, what we're looking for.
And Madam President, I personally have no objection if the superintendent was to make a recommendation on Tuesday outside of District 15 and District 214, considering that they have already advanced past a second round interview, and she is already privy to some of the recommendations and, and discussions with the process to this point.
Can I ask one more clarifying question?
Yeah, please.
If the other two districts do not want to wait, and they want to contract their lobbyists prior to Tuesday evening, do you still want to hold a board meeting on Tuesday evening, or do you want to see more lobbyists and make an individual decision? I'm not sure the lobbyists that they are selecting would do two contracts.
Would, would what?
Do two contracts.
Would additional time benefit the district?
Additional time for?
For the superintendent to extend a search beyond the initial lobbyist.
Their benefit would be if the lobbyist can't make it on that day under short notice.
Would you be amendable if they can't make it of them calling in if they're at another location, or whatever it might be? You just want to, to talk and hear them?
Yes.
And what they're, what it might be-
I, I think that's, yeah, I think that's Mr. Kramer's point, but I, I don't necessarily need to, I, I just need to know who we are contracting with.
This is if District 214 and 15 say, no, we're hiring our own, we're not waiting. Then when it comes to Tuesday.
Correct. If the superintendent is comfortable with making a recommendation on Tuesday without District 15 and District 214, I have no objection to that recommendation coming forward Tuesday if there is no benefit to waiting until March.
All right, is that clear and? Okay.
So we decide next Tuesday.
If, if the superintendent believes that the pool of lobbyist candidates are in the best interest of 211, then yes.
Well, conceivably, we could pick choice number two for our number one choice.
Well, then we would have to go with our own lobbyist.
Right.
Which would, which also gives the superintendent that option. That is correct, Madam President.
That only occurs if they want to contract immediately and not wait until Tuesday.
I agree. And if that lobbyist doesn't want to play ball with us. It may say, sure, I'll take you on.
All right. Is there any other discussion, or are we comfortable of where we're at, and Dr. Small, any other questions that, that you have, as far as, you know, giving you direction?
No.
All right, thank you.
Can I make a, a point here?
I beg your pardon?
Can I make a point here? I, I think the board gets a lot of criticism for being polarized and not coming to a decision. I think this was a great example of talking it out, putting it on the table, and coming up with, I think, what, which is a very good decision.
A request has been made for a slight recess for a couple of minutes, about a five-minute recess. May I have?
I have a second.
Okay. All in favor of a recess for five minutes?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the in-service dates and early morning work sessions. And let me read that recommended action. That the Board of Education approves the following shortened days: August 31st, 2023, for parent open house; September 28th, 2023, for college night; and Friday, November 3rd, 2023; Friday, February 9th, 2024; Friday, February 16th, 2024; and Friday, May 10th, 2024, as shortened days for in-service training of certified staff and special events for which each school may choose a maximum of two days for 2023, 2024; two shortened days for state-required testing days as determined by the Illinois State Board of Education; and implementation of 12 morning work sessions, each of which would be 75 minutes on the following Tuesdays: August 22, 2023; September 5, 2023; September 19, 2023; October 24, 2023; November 7, 2023; December 5, 2023; January 16, 2024; January 30, 2024; February 13, 2024; February 27, 2024. May I have a motion, please?
Two more. March 12.
Oh, my goodness, okay. March 12, 2024, and April 2, 2024. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye. Is that a Bradley or Kramer?
Bradley. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye. The next recommended, motion passed. The next recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the preapproval, preapproval form for future expense reimbursement for Anna Klemkowitz to attend the North Cook Division Dinner Meeting, March 15, 2023, as submitted. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Present.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye. That brings us to potential topics for future discussion. I did not receive any from anyone. Okay, then that takes us to, the next item is committee reports. I will try to be brief. NSSCO is having a legislative roundtable, which is going to be Friday, March 3, from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. It's going to be over at Timber Ridge. It will be in the gym. We will, Senator Anglesby is going to be there, Senator Laura Fine, we're expecting Representative Musman, Representative Jonathan Carroll, and Representative Mark Walker hopefully will be there. And the goal of that is to have some roundtable discussion on the needs for special need students. The, there will be parents there of special need students that will also be speaking and talking about some of the things that, that are really important to them. As for our last meeting, which was Wednesday, February 1, we had some shining stars. They were from Timber Ridge. It was the students. They focused on some of their activities that they're involved in, not just the, the academics, but taking a look at what, how the students are progressing. Looking at their, their self-awareness of some of the behavioral issues, the management of those behavioral issues, learning about social awareness and relationship skills, and making responsible decision-making. They also talked about getting the students integrated back into their home schools. They've had, 21% of the students that they've had have been integrated back into their school, or they are currently being integrated back into the school. A quick update on the superintendent search. We've done the first round of interviews. We've had some excellent candidates for NSSCO. And we will started a second round of interviews with three candidates. The goal is to have next Monday and Wednesday, we'll be doing second interviews. Make the decision on the 22nd, and then we would like to make the announcement at the next NSSCO board meeting, which will be March 1. We're planning on having that over at Timber Ridge, larger area, and, because there, I'm certain that there will probably be some teachers and administrators that definitely want to be there when the new superintendent is announced. So that, that is the plan right now. If there's any unforeseen events, then, you know, we would reschedule, but right now, it's, the date is going to be March 1, that's a given, and we're hoping to make the announcement at that time. We also had a facility planning meeting today. There were representatives from, we had Renee Erickson, she was on, she's representing the district reps. We had from the business administrators, a gentleman from District 21 that was there. We talked about looking at the long-term facilities, looking at 10 years, 10 years out, and Julie Jellic, who's the business manager, is looking to have an architectural firm do an assessment of the facilities and take a look at the tenure plan, something very similar to, to what we were doing with our architects. It's not going to be as in-depth, but giving us an idea of what things need to be done, whether it's the roofs, the, the windows, things of that nature. It would not include minor school at this time, because they're still working with District 25 to see what activities or repairs they need to be working on. The recommendation coming from the facility committee would be that the current fund balance be distributed as it has been in the past, with the exception of leaving out about $20,000. That would be the cost for this evaluation of our properties. So that's what we're looking at, and again, they'll be talking about that with the finance committee also. So that's, that's it for NSSCO, to try to be brief here. That takes us to, I'm sorry, any questions? All right, then that takes us to EdRed.
EdRed's had a couple of programs and meetings since we last met. They had their legislative dinner at the end of January. They had a couple of pre, pre-dinner workshops. I attended a couple, one on reimagining high school with the superintendent of Main Township High School. Gave us a lot of data around what they're doing there, and what they've been changing and doing there. And the other one was freedom of speech in the digital age. I thought it was very interesting. They had an attorney there talking to us, and he spent most of the time, and Mrs. Klemkowitz was there with me, spent most of the time giving us examples of cases out there regarding freedom of speech, and especially related to schools and school boards and school districts and, and things like that. So it was very informative. And then they had, the keynote was the Executive Director for Communication and Strategy for Glenview 34, District 34, and first of all, she was very energized. I thought she was going to do, like, cartwheels and jumping jacks or something up on the, on the stage. But she talked about how they rolled out an entirely new brand for their district, new logo, how they really communicated it, and, and looked to ingrain it in their district, from the kids to the executive level, and everybody in between. And she, she gave us the website for their, their, their school spirit shop, so people can buy, you know, things with their logos on it, and things like that. It was, it was very informative on, on how they really brought that to the district. I attended a EdRed meeting last week, and they covered things like, for instance, if anybody on our board is interesting, interested in being on EdRed's executive board. They have three openings for board members, for school board members to be on their board. There's legislation going on right now, bills pending and things, on things like kosher and halal foods in the schools to require all schools to be able to accommodate students who eat those types of foods. There's lots of challenges around that. For instance, District 54 doesn't have kitchens, so they can't prepare and provide special foods like that, that, you know, would meet those, those religious requirements or those ethnic requirements. So there were things like that, expenses, facilities, kosher sometimes requires a separate kitchen, separate utensils. So for our schools to be able to accommodate that, we would need to double our, our facilities for food preparation, for instance, and food serving. They talked about sex ed funding, Senate Bill 1428, which allocates grants to districts that are implementing sex ed in 6th through 12th grades. They talked about district consolidation. There's legislation and discussion around combining school districts, but most of it are elementary schools with elementary schools, and high schools with high school districts, not combining elementary and high school districts. And they also talked about, as Mrs. Klemkowitz just mentioned, things related to new student arrivals and grant money that is associate, that is available for school districts to be able to take advantage of that. They talked about TIF reform, as they tend to do every month, and then other things like training legislation, remediation data, that, there's a bill to share that with, from communicate, communities, high, community colleges to high schools to share remediation data. There was a presentation on early literacy and dyslexia, and the next meeting is March 3. And finally, I wanted to mention that there is a new tracking capability for EdRed, where members, who we all are, because we're a member district, can go log into our member username and password into the EdRed system and track bills through legislation live, to the minute, on where they stand. So if anybody ever wanted to know, from a board pers, a board member perspective, where are we with this bill, or if someone in the community wanted to ask a board member, you know, can you find out for me where this bill is sitting? We now have access to be able to do that live online. So that's my EdRed report.
Thank you.
Quick question, Madam President. Do we know if EdRed is positioning relative to the legislation for the pilot?
EdRed is, I spoke to the executive director. She is well aware of the school districts hiring a lobbyist, and she is ready to support us in any way that she can.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us then to the Community and Family Services Report. Mr. Dombrowski?
I attended the meeting in January. There was maybe six of us there. It was on a holiday. The discussion just kind of revolved around a repeat of, of what was going on in the previous meetings, and then for this past Monday, I had a conflict arise on short notice and was unable to attend.
Okay, thank you. All right, next is the Equity Report. We had the meeting on the 13th. LaShonda did an excellent job of facilitating it. She's informed us that she's visited the schools. She's had discussions with staff and students. She's had a meeting with first-year staff of color, getting excellent feedback and information from them. Each of the schools that were there gave us a little bit of insight as to what they were doing. Shonberg's had a diversity fair, or they will have one in March. All of the schools are having Black History Month activities. Each is, you know, doing a variety of things. We took a look at some of the topics included, looking at, you know, students' dress and grooming, and, you know, some of our school policies in regards to clothing that the kids wear. And there was a really good discussion in regards to that, and the students provided some, some interesting insight. And that's a conversation that's going to keep going, because, you know, there, as they said, there, the clothing- as they said, they're, the clothing is kind of a, a personal, uh, way of expressing themselves, uh, as long as it's not disruptive in the school. So there was some good conversation there, which, which will continue. Um, also talked about some, some discipline, and some of the, um, disciplines that take, you know, that happened at the, at the, each of the schools, um, a discussion on how better to help students who do get themselves into some difficulty, uh, looking at maybe proactive approaches to support the students, um, and looking, again, also looking at, at safety issues, um, as they arise at the school, and being able to deal with that, just to make certain that all of the students, uh, and staff feel safe. So those were, that was the start of conversations in regards to that, and more of that will, will continue.
Question, is there any thought to having the DEI come here and give us a presentation? There's a lot going on.
Would, uh, yeah.
Yeah, as we go through the, the strategic plan updates, each meeting, we have different presenters, she'll be in for one of them.
When, when would that be?
Um, I would need to look at the schedule, I didn't bring that with me.
Is it already scheduled?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that will be good, and she can shed a lot more information in regards to it. All right, um, Facilities and Building Safety Report, Mr. Bradley?
I won't have any updates until March, unless Lauren has something different.
All right, thank you. Um, well, the Student Wellness Report, uh, Mr. Schumacher?
Sure, the Student Wellness Committee met last week, and they discussed, uh, some components of the strategic plan, which include getting student feedback and information regarding five essentials, uh, components of expected peer relationships, and trust, safety, and collective responsibility.
Any questions, or? All right, thank you. All right, then we have our upcoming, uh, announcements and events.
And I would like to add one other item to that upcoming item, upcoming events and calendar items, and that is, that the Schaumburg High School Craft Fair is being held on Saturday, February 25th, from 10 to 4:00. And that is in support of the Schaumburg VIP program.
Okay, thank you. All right, that'll take us to the next recommended action, which is entering into closed session. The recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed, under the Open Meetings Act, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, matter pertaining to an individual student, and collective negotiating, negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Um, the recommended action is that the board return to open session, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The next recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Wendy Green, effective May 2024, according to the Master Contract of District 211 United Support Staff, Paul Hardy, effective May 2027, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, Craig Johnson, effective May 2027, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, Kristen Sander, effective May 2027, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, and Richard Split, effective May 2027, to the Master Contract, to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The next item is, the recommended action is that employee Sandy Motts be suspended for two days without pay. Further, that the Board Secretary notify said employee in writing of this action by the Board of Education. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Next recommended action is that effective August 2nd, 2023, Monty Holt be appointed as 10-month Assistant Principal of James B. Conant High School, at a gross salary of $117,550. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Next action is that the, effective August 2nd, 2023, Kevin Farrell be appointed as 10-month Assistant Principal of William Framed High School, at a gross salary of $117,550. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The next action is that effective August 2nd, 2023, Scott Newmark be appointed as 10-month Assistant Principal of William Framed High School, at a gross salary of $117,550. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The next item is that effective April 1st, 2023, Christopher Allen be appointed as Building and Grounds Manager of Schaumburg High School, at a gross salary of $105,000. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. And with no other business to come before the board, the Board President declares this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned, at 11:25.